Members, the first order of business is the adoption of the minutes of the May 28 council meeting. Motion approved by Counsel Cariot and seconded by Counsel Maves. Any changes, additions, or deletions from the minutes of May 28? Having seen none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. This time last, any declarations of a particular interest? Yes, Counsel Wing?
Communications item regarding Niagara Parks Commission fireworks and two checks made out to the Niagara Parks Commission, numbers 310-816 of 311083. Two members of my immediate family are employed there.
Thank you. Counsel Anoni?
Thank you, Miss Mayor. Checks 310-929 and 310-637. One's made out to myself and another two members of my family.
So noted. Counsel Thompson?
Yes, thank you. I have a conflict with the first application for rezoning AM 07, 2007, Pine Stone Road.
Thank you. So noted. Counsel Maves?
I have a conflict with the first application for rezoning AM 07, 2007, Pine Stone Road.
At this time, members of the council, we have a number of deputations and I'm pleased to welcome the members of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee who are here in full strength. Yes, sir.
You're on, sorry. Can you speak to Pine Stone Road?
No. It's not anywhere near the intended end. Okay, thank you. You'll be advisor. So at this time, I'd like to ask the representatives of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee to come forward. You see them in the front row, dressed, of course, in their shirts, and we have some others standing in behind. But I'd like to call on Emily and Monica. Emily Gadula, and Godula, I should say, and Monica Blaylock to come forward, who are co-chairs of this year's Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. So Emily and Monica, please.
Good evening, Mayor Ted Salsi, City Council, and senior staff. My name is Emily Gadula and this is Monica Blaylock, and we are the co-chairs for the 2006-2007 Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. We would please like to ask the members of the Mayor's Youth Advisory to send us these presented. We would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor Ted Salsi and Counsel, for your support this year. Monica and I would also like to bribe you for our this year's presentation of what we did. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go through our slideshow for you. So here, there's a slide of the committee members from the 2006-2007 Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. As you know, students are represented from the five high schools across Niagara: Anne Meyer, Stanford, Westland, St. Michael's, and St. Paul High Schools. We appreciate the continued support from Mayor Ted Salsi and City Council, as well as Constable Steve Ballard and Brian Eckert of the NRPS, Kevin Tricotto from the Boys and Girls Club of Niagara, Jordan Golly from the YMCA, the high school principals, Kerry Campbell, the Mayor's Executive Assistant, and Lori Albanese from the City Parks Recreation and Culture Offices. We provide a voice for the youth of Niagara Falls and advise council of important recreational and social issues concerning the city's younger population. We also work together to provide and promote programs that help to enhance the quality of life, health, and well-being of the youth in our community. In this slide, we have our Adopt a Street program. In the fall and spring, we cleaned up our adopted street, which is Morrison Street. Here's a photo of some of the students after our cleanup by the Oaks Park sign. On January 31st, we assisted out of the cold, serving up soup, supper, and smiles. It's great to help out in a community. Along with our many events, we also assisted in numerous community events. The city's Santa Claus Parade in November, the Mayor and Council's Tilly Cook Off for the Project Chair, Big Brothers Big Sisters Bowl for Kids' Sake, Family Literacy Day event at the McVain Community Center, Adopt a Street program, and 9/11 Day. Again this year, we hosted the Niagara Falls High School Student Art Show. I'm proud to say that this year, there was more art than ever in our turnout. That was hosted on March 3rd and 4th at Niagara's Square Shopping Mall. In this slide, we have, this year, we hosted the High School Student Film Festival at the Niagara Falls IMAX Theatre on March 29th. This was our second annual film festival. Thanks to our generous sponsors, we were able to give out $1,500 in cash prizes and gifts. The top film was Full Tilt by Chris Elphick of Stanford, and the Bell People's Choice Award went to Pi by Laura Kirkham of Anne Meyer. You can check out our website, some photos, and more information at www.nfmac.com. For the past two years, we have partnered with Niagara Transit to promote student ridership and address the issues of transportation for youth. We are proud to announce that during both the Christmas break and March break, Student Ridership Week was a resounding success, with an increase of more than 500 persons. Special thanks to Niagara Transit for their continued support. Before we began this program, student bus rides during March break in 2005 totaled at 925 riders. In 2006, with this program, the rides escalated to 5,654 riders. In 2007, they increased to 6,258 riders. We believe this partnership is working extremely well. The benefits of a reduced youth bus pass commencing in the fall of 2007 was identified by the committee. The benefits would include providing transportation to all students, whether it is to support them getting to school, work, or travel throughout our community, and adding to ridership of transit. As well as public transit is an environmentally responsible mode of transportation. It would help reduce the number of cars on our roads. This could be reviewed as part of the Transit Master Plan and Ridership Road Strategic Plan Initiative. As you can see, our partnership with Niagara Transit is very dear to us and has been increasing over the last couple of years. We still have a couple of slides for you guys. The annual Battle of the Bands was held on May 3rd, 2007, at the Optimist Club. Each year, this event continues to draw out hundreds of youth from around the city. Siblings, parents, and even grandparents attending the event. The Broken Liar from St. Michael's High School took first place this year, with Westland's in Limbo coming in a close second. The event was generously sponsored by Canadian Tire Financial Services, The Optimist Club, Young Drivers of Canada, Kojiko TV, The Review, 105.1 The River, and the city of Niagara Falls. There are some photos right there. Our newest event was the Culture Fest 2007. We hosted our first Culture Festival on Sunday, May 27th, at the McVain Community Center. Their first-time effort, it was a resounding success, and I'm very, very proud of our committee because it was a really amazing opportunity for all of us to be able to enjoy the cultures that we have in our city. We would like to thank everyone who participated, and a special thanks to Mayor Ted Salsi and Member of Provincial Parliament, Kim Crater, for joining us in their lovely salsa dancing. We're actually going to show that now, Ms. Anoni, but now we have a short Culture Fest DVD. Special thanks to John Albanese for putting this together for the committee.
My name is Louis Rubenzer. My name is Marta Zabrowski. And we are the three co-chairs of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee for the Culture Festival this year. This year, we decided to put on a new event called the Culture Festival of Niagara Falls, and we decided that this would be an awesome event for Niagara Falls because we have such diverse communities this year, and cultures are so important to Niagara Falls and all communities. We contacted a bunch of groups, including the Fairytale of our stand, the Massacre Hall, the Niagara Youth Club, the Dallas Tai Chi Society, and we have a bunch of Spanish dancers and everything like that, and we figured that it would be a good representation of Niagara. It was so nice because we got a great album, so we had really lots of support. The event really went well. Thank you.
Press copy, Mr. President. Do you want to give it? One more, please. We lost time earlier and you guessed it.
Well, I'm very proud of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee today, and this has been our first Culture Festival. We're here at the City Centre, the main City Centre, and I'm really pleased with the work that they've done here today in bringing all our people to the world, showing what a Culture Festival is, and what we do as a city. So great to be here today, and it's wonderful. They've done a great job, and congratulations to them for their actions.
My name is Black Tony P. I'm from the whole of Niagara Falls. I'm a signature of the Grand Ole Air.
I'm from Niagara Falls. I'm from the Grand Ole Air.
I'm from Niagara Falls. I'm from the Grand Ole Air.
I'm from Niagara Falls.
I'm from the Grand Ole Air.
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 Obviously, my eardrums are still ringing from that one. As you can see, despite the technical difficulties, it was a very successful event, a very diverse event, and a very colorful event, that we would like to keep going throughout the next couple of years. As our first-year event, it was an amazing success, and it really brought out a lot of different members of the community that I didn't even know were there before. It was a big eye-opener. On behalf of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee, we would just like to say thank you to Mayor Ted Salsi, City Council, and senior staff. Thank you for your continued support and the opportunity to speak this evening. We look forward to working with you guys again next year to provide a voice for the youth and to support programs that enhance the quality of life, health, and well-being of the youth in Niagara Falls. Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily and Monica, there's a few questions by members of council, so I have a request to speak from Counsel Anoni.
Thank you. You guys are getting close at this. Do we have both of you for one more year? You're both gone. I remember when you both started. Didn't seem like that long ago. You made a comment in regards to the need for, or looking for, reduced bus pass for students. Could you explain that a little bit more?
With Niagara Transit, we have been really trying to improve student ridership for the youth in Niagara Falls, and in regards to that, we have noticed a considerable amount of difference of ridership within youth, especially when we have reduced bus fees. And when we're looking upon trying to maybe reduce a student fee for the students to take the bus pass, we realize that there's a lot of different expenses that students have to make with regards to saving up for their education, as well as having part-time jobs and just trying to get around with the city. And so for them, it's hard for them to put out a lot of extra money when they're needing to save it for their university or post-secondary education. And so a lot of our ideas were to find ways that we can save students' money to ensure that they have a brighter future and are able to save their money.
That's great, because if I had counted up the tunnies that my daughter takes every day to take a bus. Mr. Mayor, can the statistics talk for themselves? When you went from 925 students using the bus through March break and winter break to 5,064, then 6,258, I think it bears looking into, this group has erected a lot of change in different areas throughout the city, and I'd like to make a motion that staff look at what the financial ramifications would be in a reduced student pass come fall, because I'd rather see the buses full with a reduced student pass than continuing to ride empty at the cost that it is now. So I'd like to move that.
Thank you, Counsel. I was going to ask for that motion to be presented. Thank you very much, and seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. Any discussion on that? Having seen none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Motion's carried. And I ask you, thank you very much. And I'd like to just say, if I may, on behalf of the entire council, that you are 25 very bright and energetic young people, and it's been a pleasure to work with you. And I want to congratulate you on your year of activity with your special projects that you've conducted throughout the year. I'd like to thank Lori Albanese for her work with the committee and dedication and heartfelt effort, as well as the staff of the Niagara Regional Police Services, Boys and Girls Club, all the other advisors and sponsors of the various events of past year. Members of council, I should just advise you as well, some of the accomplishments of these young people, just to name a few. Congratulations to Sania Balu for receiving the Vicki Hall Young Woman of Distinction Award. Vicki? Or Sania? I should say, Sania here? Would you like to stand? Congratulations. Congratulations to Emily Gadula for receiving the Optimist Club Youth Award and for being selected to attend the Rotary Adventure and Citizen Program in Ottawa. Congratulations again. Two students have been nominated to represent Canada to attend the Global Young Leaders Conference this summer in Europe. Andrea Ivanovic and Emily again will visit Vienna, Austria, Budapest, Hungary, and Prague. Again, all the best to you. Is Andrea here? Andrea? Congratulations. Many of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee students are graduating this year, members of council, and heading off to universities and colleges throughout Ontario and also Europe. Congratulations to Marta Sakowski, who should be attending University in England. Is Marta here? Marta, congratulations. Joanna Klumzek will be attending Grade 11 in Austria next year. Joanna? Joanna here? And we have a number of Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee members who are receiving many scholarships and awards that have been selected as their high school valutatorians, so we have a very bright young bunch of people, and congratulations on a year well done. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Great. The next order of business, members of council, is a deputation with regard to the volunteer of the year for Seniors Month, and we have a special visitor with us. I'd like to call Hanya Goforth from our Parks, Recreation, and Culture Department to come forward to say a few words about Seniors Month.
Hello. Thank you, your worship, members of council and senior staff. Each year, the Government of Ontario designates June as Seniors Month to celebrate the countless experiences, accomplishments, and contributions of seniors. Across the province, community organizations host special events to recognize seniors and the countless contributions they make to Ontario's way of life. I'm here tonight just to briefly highlight some of the events we're hosting at the Coronation Fifty Plus Recreation Centre to celebrate Seniors Month, although I do prefer the word "older adult." Just clear that up. In addition to the current 50 programs on offer each week at the Coronation Centre, I'm delighted to inform you of the following upcoming events that the community are invited to join. Thursday, June 14th, a bus trip to St. Jacob's Market, always popular, with shopping and lunch. You only have until tomorrow to purchase your tickets, so I'm sorry for the short notice. On Friday, June 15th, our MPP, Kim Crater, will join us at the centre for an open dialogue to discuss senior issues, and we will also be having a free seminar on safe medication use by the Ontario Pharmacists Association. On Monday, June 18th, you're welcome to join us for our Fun Fitness Day at Kingsbridge Park. Come and try out some of the Coronation Centre's fitness classes, including Tai Chi, line dancing, and the Get Fit classes. You can meet the instructors and join us for a potluck lunch if you wish. On Monday, June 25th, a day at the races. A bus trip has been planned to go to Fort Erie Race Track and Slots, and lunch is also included. And to round off the month, we're having a strawberry and chocolate social on Friday, June 29th, with our chocolate dipping fountains, as well as you will enjoy live entertainment. So this concludes my short presentation. Thank you for the opportunity for speaking tonight, and for more information, everyone is encouraged to call the centre.
Thank you, Hanya.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask of Barbara Westwater to come forward to join you at the podium, please. Members of council, Niagara Falls has once again participated in the 2007 Senior of the Year Award. This annual award was established by the Government of Ontario to give each municipality in Ontario the opportunity to honor one outstanding local senior. The recipients are individuals who have enriched the social, cultural, or civic life of the community without thought of personal or financial gain. This year, we are honoring Barb Westwater. Barb joined the Coronation Centre in 1998, where she participated in the fitness program. Her volunteer involvement started shortly after that by being appointed the first fitness group liaison representative. Her involvement has continued over the past nine years. Barb has shared her talent and wisdom at the Coronation Centre by serving on the advisory committee. She is currently a greeter and also volunteers at the Coronation Closet, and helps at special events, and most importantly, is a volunteer coordinator who oversees all the volunteers for events at the centre. This is a big job in itself and can be a real challenge. Barb has been excellent in this position, and Barb certainly gives back to the community. We are truly fortunate to have her on our team. Thank you, Barb, for your involvement at the Coronation Centre. On behalf of the members of staff at Coronation Centre, members of council, and the residents of the city of Niagara Falls, congratulations on receiving the Senior of the Year Award. Let's have you take your seat. Barb, we have this plaque to present to you as the Senior of the Year Award. Pick him up. Presenting Barbara Westwater, City of Niagara Falls, in recognition of your outstanding contribution as a committee after age 65. And it's signed by Donald Jim Bradley, the Lieutenant Governor of Ontario, as well. So my son. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Another presentation as well, our Member of Provincial Parliament has asked me to read this to you. Dear Mr. Westwater, congratulations are in order. I regret it, I regret it not being present, that a student proceed presents the certificate, but please accept this token of my appreciation for your commitment to the Coronation Senior Centre in Niagara Falls and the occasion of your recognition as the 2007 Volunteer of the Year for your service at the centre and its members. Volunteers like you who give so much and who are so much more than helping hands through these efforts are much needed and appreciated. Your gifts of time and service become the heart of the people and organization that benefit from your commitment. And though I could not be here tonight to congratulate you personally, I do want to thank you for your dedication to your community and the Coronation Senior Centre. You exemplify what living in Niagara Falls is all about. Signed, Kim Crater, MD for Niagara Falls, along with the certificate as well. Congratulations. Tim has a process where he likes to present the three pins of Ontario. He usually goes with his gold plate, but I don't see the gold on these ones. Anyway, there are the three pins, the Ontario flag, the Ontario official flower, and the coat of march. Congratulations.
Thank you. Your worship, members of council, I am so honored this year to receive this reward again as due to this lady here.
You can, you can.
Oh. It's due to this lady here who does so much for the centre, does all the great events she can support. She's truly a terrific person. I enjoy thoroughly working with her. Brenda and Laura, they're great to work with. Coronation Centre 55 Plus, a great listening.
Well, thank you for your commitment. And last but not least, on behalf of the members of the city council, we're gathered here, it's just a great pleasure to congratulate and recognize you for receiving the 2007 Senior of the Year Award as well. This time, members of council, we'll proceed with the rest of the agenda. They could call on the clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda, please.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit proposed 19-on-street townhouse dwellings on Pine Stone Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, May 11, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment or to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, shall leave their name on the sign sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Rafita. This time, I'd like to ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Darvison?
Mr. Mayor, members of council? Our first application this evening is part of the neighbourhood of St. David's Development by the Rocker Community Development Corporation. It involves a portion of the area, the subdivision that was originally subdivided for single-family purposes and zone for that purpose. The application this evening is to change these lots into 19 townhouse units. So the application is proposing to build 19 on-street townhouse units. Subject lands are currently zone, single-family residential, and a multiple-family residential zone is being proposed. This is the site plan of the proposed development. Undername, the site plan, you'll notice the numbers, those are the lot numbers of single-family houses, and therefore, they're going to be amalgamated and changed into the 19 townhouse units. Since the official plan, the subject lands are designated for residential purposes. The proposed development conforms the official plan insofar as the development conforms the overall density provisions of the neighbourhood of St. David's Community Plan. The existing panoramic views enjoyed by the homes to the south, that's in the Calle Geral subdivision, of the proposed townhouses will not be impacted, and the townhouses are paddled with the surrounding decks of housing in the area. In terms of zoning, the zoning of single-family with
neighbourhood of St. David's development by the Rockford Community Development Corporation. It involves a portion of the area, the subdivision that was originally subdivided for single-family purposes and zoned for that purpose. The application this evening is to change these lots into nineteen townhouse units. So the application is proposing to build nineteen on-street townhouse units. The subject lands are currently zoned, single-family residential, and a multiple-family residential zone is being proposed. This is the site plan of the proposed development underlying the site plan. You'll notice the numbers, those are the lot numbers of single-family houses, and therefore they're going to be amalgamated and changed into the nineteen townhouse units. Since the official plan, the subject lands are designated for residential purposes. The proposed development conforms the official plan insofar as the development conforms the overall density provisions of the neighbourhood of St. David's community plan. The existing panoramic views enjoyed by the homes to the south, that's in the Calle Geral subdivision, of the proposed townhouses will not be impacted, and the townhouses are compatible with the surrounding decks of housing in the area. In terms of zoning, the zoning of single-family would be changed to a townhouse zoning. This is the same zoning that has been used for the other townhouses in the overall plan. In terms of special zoning features, the nineteen townhouse units will be brought closer to the road to reflect the neo-traditional townhouse design in this general neighbourhood. They are exceptionally larger floor areas to coincide with the larger single-family grounds in the area, and the zoning will feature larger frontages, lot sizes and rearyards than typical on-street townhouses. It's our conclusion that the applicant application can be supported. The proposed change of land use conforms to residential policies of the official plan. The townhouses will be compatible with the surrounding neighbourhood of St. David's development. Substantial setbacks will be provided from the larger single-family homes to the south, and the dwellings will provide additional housing choices for residents wishing to live in this area. It's our recommendation this evening that the council approve the zoning of these townhouse developments. Now, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to actually draw to the council's attention a letter that just was received today, a senior package, and this letter is looking to confirm the elevations in our analysis to date. Now, we have been in touch with Rockford Corporation, Mr. Clarkson, and Mr. Clarkson may have additional information hopefully for council regarding the confirmation of the elevations of these drawings, but it has been raised as a concern, and I draw that to your attention.
Thank you. As members of council, I think you have this letter in your package, so councillor Carrion and councillor De Angel.
Thank you, your worship. A quick question for our planner. Now, the height restrictions, the same on multi-family as they are on single-family from our point of view, the height restrictions?
They generally are. In this particular case, because of the elevation of the property, the application proposed a thirteen-meter height, a maximum typically is ten, ten meters. But the reason that it was proposed was because the elevation of pine crust that goes up the street and to allow some flexibility in the siding of the dwellings and measuring of the height, that's why I had additional...
But would it be any different? My question is, would it be any different if it was single-family homes as opposed to townhomes?
Typically, no, and that's where Mr. Clarkson will verify that the homes are permitted at ten meters and these developments are typically at ten or...
Thank you, councillor De Angel.
Thank you, your worship. In the letter that we did receive, I guess to yourself, to Doug, it talks about the fact that while the neighbour who sent the letter in is not necessarily opposed to the change in zoning, that they do feel that it should be a requirement that sightlines are provided before any approval is given, and was wondering if Mr. Darvison can add it?
Sure. Mr. Darvison, you can answer that question, please.
Thank you to you, Mr. Mayor. Subject to the information we do receive tonight from Mr. Clarkson, that might suffice. Otherwise, the request was, don't pass the zoning bylaw until these elevations are confirmed and finalized. So, one way or the other, I haven't heard from Mr. Clarkson this evening. We've been trying to get a hold of each other all day. So, subject to the information provided this evening is one way of handling it, or secondly, just to confirm these matters with Mr. Geranek and his consultant.
Do you have any further comments with regard to the application?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any further comments with regard to the application?
No.
Thank you. Members of council, any questions to Mr. Darvison at this point? Already, at this point then, the members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives if the party has not made an oral written submission at this public meeting. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. So, sir, you have an opportunity, please come forward. Anyone other than the applicant, please. And if you'd be kind enough to state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Perry Hugel, 6304 Stonefield Park. I'm in one of the townhouses that fronts on Stonefield Park, and I've lived in that development since March of 1999.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, planners, interested parties, thank you very much for the opportunity of addressing it this evening. We have some very serious concerns, and I have some peculiar concerns that I want to draw to your attention about this zoning amendment. I think Mr. Darvison was quite fair in his presentation to the extent that he didn't say we have to do this, he didn't say there isn't any good reason not to do it. I can't find anything in the material that would support the application, the need for it, or any other thing apart from the developer's wish. Now, there's about a hundred residents in that development now, and the gentleman who follows me to speak this evening will tell you the summary of votes and so on in favor and opposed, but I can share with you that there are some deep concerns about this and that this is the developer trying to knock off and finalize the development and then move on somewhere else because he would prefer not to build single-family homes, I presume. Now, I have gone to some length here to look at some of the background because I was one of the earlier owners and purchasers of a unit. I've gone back through all of the materials that I've assembled over the time, and I've also looked at bylaw ninety-seven dash one seventy-four, which was the original bylaw that led to the zoning of this particular property and which led to our townhouses and the current single-family lots as they appear. There were specifics provided in this bylaw in 1997, and they were very specific for the lots in question, which are numbered lots one to thirty-three currently. A number of those are single-family lots that have been built on, but the ones that you have heard about tonight that the applicant seeks to rezone have not been built upon. But they were provided for, and the developer obviously wanted them at the time. And those of us who bought residences and townhouses and looked at this development from 1997 forward, we looked at the whole project and saw, is this a place that we want to live? And yes, it was. Now, there are to be significant changes if we get more townhouses. We will have very few single-family homes, perhaps only ten. And that is why, out of a development where there's a hundred homes, there should be serious consideration given to granting this application because it will change the mix. It's not a serious change, I don't mean to suggest that at all, but it will change the mix. And it is something that we didn't anticipate, and it is something we don't really like. Now, there are some peculiar problems with some of the streets in our development, and I note Rockwood and Pinestone and Greystone and Stonefield Park. Now, Rockwood is a muse street, you can see that on the location map, and it's... The definition of a muse street in our development is that it's where the garages are. So all of the garages on the street above Rockwood, which is not apparent on the location map, all of those houses have garages that front on Rockwood. That street has a nominal width of only sixteen foot six inches. That is the same as Greystone Muse, which you will see as three streets below Rockwood. And those streets have garages backing onto them from both directions, so that we have thirty-seven garages on those different streets, Rockwood and Greystone, and from Pinestone there are ten units, but all the other streets have nine units, so that we have people who have to back out of garages on driveways that are only nominally eight feet wide, or deep, rather, not wide, eight feet deep. We have to be able to back out onto a street and proceed up or down the Muse Street to leave the development. Now, in the wintertime, that problem becomes really difficult because, first of all, we don't get plowing that clears all of the sixteen-feet depth of the nominal width of the street, and we are left with cleaning some snow up and having to contend with our vehicles on other things. Stonefield Park, which is, you'll see, has occupied two sides of the park, its width is only eighteen foot six, whereas Sandhill Drive, which you cannot see, it's not named on that map, but it is the street that goes, that joins from Pinestone, Greystone, Stonefield and Rockwood, that's twenty-four foot six wide, nominally speaking. So what problems do we confront in the wintertime? Well, we have a snow removal bylaw in this city that says thou shalt not park on the streets overnight. Well, where in that area, I would ask, would you find places to park for your guests, your overnight visitors and so on? Coupled with the very narrow streets of Rockwood and Greystone and also Stonefield, there really isn't anywhere for thirty-seven owners of townhomes in that, aligning themselves on those streets to find places for parking for an extra car, even if they have one themselves or for a visitor who comes. Now, you may be familiar, some of you, with Rockford Court, which is also not named, but it's the long street cul-de-sac down here in the bottom that curves over to the right in the bottom right of the location map. All of the townhomes that are either constructed or under construction on that development, part of the development, have very long driveways. You can park extra cars, visitors, whatever, in that development or in that part of the development quite easily off the street, so it's not a problem for them. The single-family residences that are built don't have a real problem because they have long driveways and they can deal with it on their own. But the thirty-seven of us who own one of these townhouses can't get a second car or third car or any visitor into our driveway overnight. Now, I'm going to, if I may, and Mr. Mayor just pass out what was the location map that you're all looking at now, but what it was back in 1999.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Now, you'll see that the same streets are shown there, except that the street at the top above Rockwood Muse that isn't on the location map is named Stonehaven. Actually, that name is not correct anymore. It's Forest Lawn or Forest Haven, I think, or Forest Ridge. I'm not sure how that change came to pass, but in any event, what I am drawing to your attention, and you'll see that highlighted, is the area on the right side of the location map on the east side where it says St. Paul Avenue, and the street coming in from St. Paul is Stonegate. And you'll see to the right and the left of Stonegate what appears to be two parking areas. They don't exist on the location map you're looking at on the scanning screen tonight, but they existed on the material that were given to prospective purchasers when we bought in 1998, 1999 and so on. Those, in fact, do not exist. They are here on this plan, on this marketing material, but they are not in the development. What we have to the north side of Stonegate is a townhouse. The lot, and properly, I think properly depicted there on the location map on your screen, Stonegate has a townhouse at that spot where the parking lot would have been according to this plan I've just shown you. To the south side of that, there was to be another parking lot. There is a building there, but that building is a pump house facility. It looks like a home, but in fact is a mechanical structure for pumping. So we don't have any guest or visitor parking, and we have this problem in the winter. And it affects directly the thirty-seven townhouses, but I think indirectly it would affect those townhouse owners and other unit owners that live elsewhere in the development. So that is a major concern for us in this application. Planning department says that only a marginal impact would occur with parking, traffic and so on by the change to this zoning for the townhouses. Well, in my view, that's a twenty-two percent increase. And it's a twenty-two percent increase on that part of the development that proceeds west from the intersection of Sandhill Drive, which unfortunately is not shown in your location map, but it's the cross street, and it's twenty-two percent increase from that intersection going in a northwesterly direction up to the top of the cul-de-sac on Pinestone Road. I think that's more than marginal. There's going to be, at some point, and there already are at the top end of that cul-de-sac, four very large townhouses. On a proper depiction of that, there would be fourteen townhouses around the cul-de-sac circle. That's what the planning calls for now, that's what the developer wants to do, and they're not shown on that location map. So you're just adding to the complexity of townhouse development. Mr. Darvison refers to neo-traditional views close to the street with the frontages of these new townhomes. Well, that's our problem in the thirty-seven units that I've specifically drawn to your attention tonight. We are close to the street, our garages are close to the street, so close in fact that we can't park a car in the driveways. We either are in the garage or we're out on the road. So these are concerns that confront us, and I would very much like to encourage council not to approve this application on the part of the developer, but to, if it isn't rejected wholesale out of hand, I would recommend that the whole matter be deferred eighteen to twenty-four months until this parking issue for this particular development and the interests of over thirty-five percent of the town, of the unit owners in this development, both now and for the future. We're roughly thirty-five percent of the unit owners in this development.
Excuse me, Mr. Hugel, you have one more minute left?
Okay. And I would really recommend to council that this is a serious issue, it should be addressed, and I would really want council to consider what was to have happened back in ninety-seven, ninety-eight, never has occurred, and now this is the opportunity to make it right. And I think it could be done by taking lots twelve and thirteen, which are the closest to St. Paul on the southeast side, and, okay, twelve and thirteen, and make those into a parking area. Alternatively, lot twenty-three across Pinestone Road and their Sandhill Drive is shown as a location site on that. One of those lots or two of those lots, if it's the one on this side, would be best reserved for the visitor parking, the guest parking that this development really, really needs. So those are my main comments. I have some material which I will leave with council later for you to consider if you defer the matter, and I highly commend it. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hugel. I have questions for Mr. Peter Angel, councillor Peter Angel, I should say.
Yeah, your worship, I guess to yourself to Mr. Darvison, I'm wondering if you can get a response from the planning staff. I think that the presenter makes a lot of valid points, and I'm wondering how planning staff would feel about that.
Mr. Darvison, could you give us some comments, please?
Yes, my recollection tells me that there was an either-or situation built into the neighbourhoods of St. David's plan. I believe it was supposed to be a small commercial outlet at Stonegate and hence a little parking area, or alternatively, the land was zoned, and again, this is my recollection, this has been a long time ago, alternatively, the land was zoned for housing. So they, at that time, when they were proposing with the development, you know, the market wasn't set, the market actually has really taken off here for these kinds of housing, and I believe that the small commercial outlet was deleted and the alternative of providing the housing was done. And that's my recollection. There may be a reference from Rockford here that could get into more detail of that, but without going back into the files, that's my recollection of what happened.
Councillor Peter Angel?
I'm just wondering as well, your worship, to try to answer the speaker's questions, whether or not there is an onus on the developer to provide parking in this development.
And I share your same concern. Mr. Darvison, given the fact that the parking is limited, and you've heard the concern of Mr. Hugel, is it still fair to assume that that could be aggravated by more compounded development for more townhomes? Can you give us that, your opinion in that regard for it?
Yes, well, the zoning bylaw requires a minimum amount of parking for any kind of unit.
So would visitors park if you heard the concern of Mr. Hugel?
Well, that's, you know, I'm not sure about the number of spaces that have been allocated for each individual unit. I hear from the speaker that the driveway widths are short and therefore driving or parking in the garages are actually the way to park, other than on-street parking. Again, I would have to go back into the actual zoning bylaw and look up that information for the council, but again, when this development and any development that is approved has to meet the minimum parking requirements of that zone. This is a compact form of housing, but yet still, a minimum parking requirement would have to be that.
Councillor Peter Angel?
Yeah, your worship, and I'm wondering...
there was only twenty-four units, I believe that there was sixteen visitor parking spaces and everyone as well had a garage and enough space to park at least one car. So if we're dealing with a development here that, you know, has put in some townhomes, not had an additional parking requirement, and then come back and rezone some single-family to more townhomes, and then some single-family to more townhomes, then perhaps it's something that we should be looking at, Your Worship.
I'd like to get the answers. Councilor, I think we'll have that before you vote, and we'll have the applicant speak, so I'd like to hear from all of the people who are concerned as residents as well. So thank you very much, Mr. Hibble. We'll try to get that question answered for you.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification on the issue of convenience store or commercial outlet, that was never marketed to us, it never did appear in any of our materials, and certainly I was never aware of it. And I've been around and involved in that development since nineteen ninety-eight, early nineteen ninety-nine. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anyone else other than the applicant wishes to speak? Please come forward. Welcome, sir. Good evening, and would you be kind enough to give us your name and address for the record, please?
My name is John Grant. I live at sixty-two eighty-nine Pinestone Road. I have a petition that was circulated through the community. It was developed by Mr. Craig Fowler. He lives at sixty-three thirteen Pinestone. And there were five issues that the people who signed it, the twenty-six petitioners signed, kind of gave us feedback, and I can summarize them quite quickly. The first and the overriding concern was that the current site plan is approved for single-family homes. And as people noted, changes in the Walker development aren't new. Earlier site plans amended over time allowed four or five plex units to be added to subsequent site development, replacing three plex units that were originally scheduled. We all bought our homes here in good faith, based on the site plan presented to us at the time of purchase. And the concern, the overriding concern of all of the petitioners is that there's simply no reason to change the existing plan for other than what appears to be only in the developer's best interest. Several other issues that Mr. Hibble has addressed. Snow removal has been a serious issue and a present concern to homeowners as Pinestone Road, Stonefield Park, and some of Stonehaven. As was mentioned, all of our garages backed onto these lanes, and it becomes increasingly difficult to negotiate cars in the news once snow accumulation begins. The city has responded to phone calls to clear the snow, but it takes a few days to get the burden of larger accumulations taken care of, once the middle units have had to shovel snow into the street or wherever to access cars in the garage. There are landlocked units within this subdivision, and they present the biggest problem because we simply have to push our snow into the street. It's difficult to go on either side or between the garages with the snow. As was mentioned too, we can't park overnight on Pinestone Road. We're just wondering, the question was asked, has the planning department considered the challenge of snow removal on Pinestone Road especially from the nine new landlocked units, those owners who will have to push their snow directly on the street? Parking was another issue that was given. It's currently an issue for overnight guests on Pinestone and Stonefield in particular. We can't park on the streets, and we have no driveways to speak of. And the, as, again, this is repetitious, but what happened to the two parking lots proposed in the site plan, people remember seeing them. The eight single-family homes on Sand Hill Drive and two sold lots will be orphaned. A concern expressed as to what will happen to the value if four plex, if four fourplex and three plex units will replace the currently approved twelve single-family homes. It was mentioned several times that many residents include their home by and large as a part of their personal asset, and they worry about the likelihood or the possibility of reduced home values. Again, this was stated, we all bought our homes having looked at the site plans at hand and at the time of purchase and knowing what to expect in future developments. The last issue that was mentioned was, has the planning department carefully considered the impact of these nine landlocked units that will be built in this area? Once the engine units have fenced, which is the trend and also the precedent, how can construction, maintenance, fire, ambulance services enter the backyards of these landlocked units? And there are nine of them, other than in the front door and out through the back door. It's a challenge. Not sure about this one, but drainage could also be a factor with the high elevation, the runoff, groundwater in the landlocked units. Has this been addressed by the planning department and the city engineers? We live across the street in Pinestone and Stonefield. We've had to address drainage issues as well after buying. We tend to fix ours and then it becomes our neighbor's problem and so on down the street because of the grade. In summary to this presentation, we simply feel that there's no reason to amend the current bylaw seventy-nine dash two hundred to allow for one threeplex and for fourplexes to be built. Your Worship, I have a summary of my presentation and the petition is here.
Thank you, if you'd like to circulate, please, thank you very much. Just you, to Councilman May, if he'll pass along. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation this evening. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter this evening? For the record, we'd be kind enough to mention your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Andrea Ivanovich. I live at six-four four-seven January Drive, and I am here this evening representing my father, David Ivanovich, who many of you know is very involved in our community. He's actually representing Niagara Falls this evening at the soccer team. They have a games night, which he coaches. So, good evening, Your Worship, Mayor Ted Zelsi, and members of municipal council. Our family, David and Marcie Ivanovich, are the current residents of six-four four-seven January Drive, Niagara Falls, Ontario. Recently, we were informed by way of regular mail that the Walker Community Development Corporation are requesting a bylaw amendment to clear planned development. When my father visited the praying department at City Hall, staff was still awaiting elevational drawings from the developer. As of two o'clock PM Friday, June eighth, two thousand and seven, these drawings had not yet been delivered. In speaking with Andrew Bryce, along with Alex Tylavich in attendance, the specific heights of the proposed buildings were not available. Mr. Bryce felt that thirty-two feet was a height restriction, but he was not one-hundred percent sure. Page three, paragraph two of city staff's recommendation report clearly states that the existing panoramic views will be protected and the height of the townhouses will not impact these single detached dwellings. Over the weekend, when the wind finally subsided late Sunday evening, my father purchased several helium balloons, complete with enough string to emulate a thirty-two-foot evaluation maximum of a potential roof line in order to see how this proposed development would affect our panoramic views. As shown in the pictures of our quick attempt to show the impact on our sightlines, our sightlines of the lake and surrounding area are completely eliminated across the entire plane of our backyard. What we are left with is a view of asphalt shingles from one end of property to the other end and beyond, sorry. So I believe you have all received these pictures here, and it is clear that the first picture, number one, shows that our backyard is a very important part of our property. And it's very clear that walking from the back of our house, that you can see the view in behind there. Well, picture two, the top line demonstrates where the roof was, where the roof is approximately, where approximately be. Image three shows a view from one of our back rooms. Our house is nearly entirely glass windows, opening up onto the back. And in image four here, it shows walking straight outside that all we would be able to see is single roof from nearly our entire property with maybe only a few gaps between the houses. This is also shown through pictures five and six. Especially picture five, you can see that, you can barely even see the top of this house that's left over here, and the entire rest of our view would be entirely eliminated, leaving no panoramic view. And this is, this is, this is me with the balloons, actually, over here. And that's approximately where the red line is at the top. And the orange line is about the height of the street lamps, showing that we are actually within reason doing this experiment and that it's not entirely made up. Looking at image six here, you can see that the height is only a little bit above the existing townhouses here, showing that once they are back on to our side of Pinestone Road, that it would be approximately that height. Now, needless to say, the value of our home will plummet considerably. And to make matters worse, my father was informed by Mr. Bryce at eleven forty AM on Monday, June eleventh, that the elevational maximum for this area is actually thirteen meters, which is forty-two point six five feet. This is actually some ten feet higher than our test balloons. So the red line isn't even exactly where the roofs would be. It would be even higher than that entirely limiting our view. Our house is completely rear yard oriented, with the back of the house being mainly floor-to-ceiling windows overlooking the valley. The beautiful panoramic views that we now enjoy would be replaced with a massive sea of asphalt shingles. I do not believe that the developer is fully aware of the ramifications of such a large massive roof and the real effect on the adjacent landowners. At this time, our family would like to encourage council to delay the passing of this zoning bylaw amendment application until the applicant provides elevational drawings and an accurate sightline evaluation is completed to determine the actual impact on the panoramic views from the neighboring residents of January Drive. We look forward to working with the developer to help move this process along quickly, as we are also eager to see this untamed slope behind our home finally cleaned and groomed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Andrea. You have a question to ask, Councilor Amy?
I just wanted to say, you're extremely impressive. People are going to be hiring her to be their agent.
I told you, you had some bright, energetic young people. Thank you, Andrea. Now, we'll see if we can deal with some of your concerns as well. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter?
Excellent.
If you want anyone else other than the applicant, please come forward. And once again, for the benefit of the record, you'd be kind enough to give us your name and address.
Kit Thompson. Good evening. Six-four two-five January Drive. That wonderfully talented young waitress owns ours and have known them since they have moved in. I'd just like to reiterate some of the things that have been discussed this evening. We've been on January Drive since eighty-four and have gone through various meetings on the changes and alterings of the property that is behind us on January Drive. At one point, as you may recall, it was a fifteen-story apartment tower that was changed to single-family and to townhouses as it is right now. Ultimately, there would be three single-family homes in our backyard because of the location of our property, which has a rather large back area. And at the time, we were informed that it would be about a thirty-meter height. So assess some of that. We don't have the same view possibility as the Ivanovics do on that side of us, nor than the neighbors who have come to the right-hand side of us. In any case, that's one of the things that is strongly important for the residents there. And the other part is the elevation and the terrain that is there. If council is aware, there is on twelve, thirteen, fourteen, those would all be in my backyard. There's a severe drop-off. The newest proposal is asking for the properties to be deeper into that. The deeper you get, the more you are into the brow. There's a significant possibility of erosion at that point, and I know the Walker development has tried to take care of that in the development. It's now at the east of us, near St. Paul. In any case, the brow is a consideration. How will they deal with that? There has been no additional information since the beginning of it in how that property line will be dealt with. Fencing, stonework, folders, something has not really come forward yet. And the farther up Pinestone you go, the elevation changes. So if that's thirty meters or thirteen, no, or thirteen feet, thirteen meters, which is almost forty feet, still remains, there is a considerable vaulting of holes that would be at that particular side. If council can consider all of those parts, if there are variables in the townhomes that they are not all two-story plus vaulted roofs, it would make a difference. And between ten meters and thirteen meters, that's a lot of feet. I have not put my name onto the list of concerns. I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Thompson. Thank you. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? Anyone else? Kayden, at this time, a call on the applicant or his representative? Please come forward, sir. And for the benefit of the record, please be kind enough to give us your name and address.
Good evening, my name's Carrie Clark. I'm the development manager at Walker Community Development.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors, staff. There are a number of issues raised, and if I could just go through them, try to go through them in order. First, with reference to the letter from the Ivanovics. And I have been in discussion with planning staff Friday and today about a plan that we're putting together to actually deal with that issue before we knew about the Ivanovics' letter. And what's proposed, and there actually was a profile plan that was provided to planning just before lunchtime today. I apologize about the timing. I guess it wasn't early enough to get it into the package. But if I could go over these units, units one to four and five to eight, which are on lots twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, are proposed to be two-story townhouses and with a height just under ten meters. Now, the other, the next three-unit townhouse block and four-unit townhouse block are proposed to be single-story at a height of just under eight meters. Now, those, all of these units are actually derived from the designs that we have been building in block forty-nine, which is just to the southeast. The design is by the same architect and the same facade treatment. However, the roof design has been lowered. The roof pitches that we have in block forty-nine are a ten-to-twelve roof pitch, which is fairly steep. And because of the sensitivity of the sightlines, we decided to drop that to a seven-twelve pitch, which gains, or not gains, the lowers to the peak of the roof. It was mentioned that the zoning does allow for thirteen-meter heights, which is quite extreme. I think there are some houses that are nearing that height on Rock Cliff Estates, which is part of our development just to the west. We didn't really want to have that situation. It's been well documented over the past ten years, and I have met with Kit Thompson on a couple of occasions, it's been a while, but there always was that concern about the sightlines. And we did consciously keep that in mind when we're working on this proposal. Actually, getting into details, and these are, mind you, they're only preliminary, the heights and the locations of the buildings that we put together. It's difficult to see, but in between the numbers twelve and thirteen of the lots, twelve, thirteen, is a dash line which drops down slightly to the left. I believe that's the property line between the Ivanovics and the Thompson property. So the Ivanovic property is, has part of lot of unit two and all of unit one behind their rear lot line. In that location, the peak of the roof is actually below the brow of the top of the bank, which would be their backyard elevation. If I was to make an estimation, probably a meter and a half below. And the next set of townhouses, for the next lot, Thompson's, units three and four would be slightly below the brow, and then five, six, seven and eight are about a meter higher than the... And the next set of townhouses, for the next lot, Thompson's, units three and four would be slightly below the brow, and then five, six, seven, and eight are about a meter higher than the backyard elevation. And similarly with units nine, ten, and eleven, even though that drops down to a single-story. I hope I'm not losing you on that, but what we've tried to do is minimize the peak of the roof height with respect to the units. Units twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, because the road does go up, those lots are getting closer to the ground elevation of the lots on Caligero Estates, and that peak roof is in the order of two meters above the backyard elevations for the Caligero residents. That's about all the information that I have on the sightlines. That's as far as we've taken preliminary design. The next items, our concerns were raised by Mr. Hugo. And the concerns, as I noted them, first of all, laneway units and back and load of the garages are concerned because with the existing residents. Those are totally different designs than what we're proposing here. What we're proposing are units with the garages in the front with the driveway that has parking space. There was comment about the units in Block Forty-nine having significant, a significant length of driveway. That is going to be exactly the same as what we have here or are proposing. Pine Stone Road is a standard width road allowance, twenty-meter road, with an eight-and-a-half-meter pavement. Excuse me for, but I am using metric. I'm not exactly sure what the imperial is. I think it's sixty-six foot road allowance, and the pavement width is about twenty-seven feet. The boulevards are five-point-seven-five meters. That is the first part of the driveway, and then the setback from the property line to the garages is an additional six meters. So you have eleven-point-seven-five meters as a depth of the driveway. And all of these units are proposing double-car garages, so there would be room to park four cars in the driveway and an additional two cars in the garages in all of these units. And that is how the visitor parking issue we're assuming would be dealt with on these There were a few references to the both sides of Stone Gate and that there was parking. As I recall, there were two blocks that were set up initially on either side of Stone Gate, and the intent was that they were going to be commercial blocks. Right at the beginning of the process, we had contacted businesses at Corner Stores, Tim Hortons, that sort of thing, to see if we could get something like that into this development. And there was no interest in putting that into a new development. They want to, or the reason that we were given was that they would like to have a developed area. So that was really what led to the rezoning of those, not the rezoning, but the redesign into a townhouse. And the townhouse is on the north side of Stone Gate. The south side is the location of the sewage pumping station for the development. The reason that we made this application, and it was in our application to the city, was that the market trends that we had seen in the development, in particular, the sales that we have in the Block Forty-nine development, which is shown in the bottom right of the plan, have been very good. We're currently constructing the last block of townhouses in that, and then that portion of the development will be built out. There's very good reception to the designs of the townhouses, and our reaction with the zoning, the rezoning application was strictly to meet the market trends, take advantage of that, the way things are right now, and to try and get the development built. And this is what goes on. Mr. Grant raised several concerns, some a little similar to Mr. Hugo. There was mention about four- and five-unit townhouse blocks being a change, if I understood that correctly. There were several different types of three- and four-unit townhouses, and the three, four, and five are in keeping with the zoning, if I interpreted that correctly. And it was all, the permits, billing permits are obviously through the billing department put by the planning and engineer. Drainage issues were also mentioned. Drainage has been discussed with the engineering department. Because we're in the rezoning, we haven't provided anything in detail to the engineering department with respect to the green design. We are working on that, but we didn't want to proceed until we knew what the outcome of the particular dis- dispossibility was. I believe I, oh, I'm sorry. I've addressed Mr. Yanovits' concerns, Kit Thompson. I believe I have as well. If I missed any, please be willing to take any questions.
Are there any further questions from members of council? Yes, or may I?
Yes, the one thing that wasn't addressed in Mr. Grant's letter, and this was raised in this chamber previously by Mr. Ron Ponce, who I remember explained about having to secure an easement in order to get to his own backyard with a lawnmower. We're looking in, he warned us, about future developments of that nature in this very complex. And, you know, here we have again, nine landlocked units where the interior units will not be accessible except through the house itself. How do you propose these people are to get lawnmowers to their backyard or any other wheelbarrows, any other equipment they might need back there?
Mr. Clark?
Are you going to provide easements for them?
When the issue with the Mr. Grant's raised was dealt with at council, there was a number of exchanges back and forth between ourselves and staff. And we, our position was, and this was actually in response to the people that were coming as potential purchasers in our development, that they did not want easements across their Mr. Grant's has actually been the only person who has raised this concern. The other people have not raised that issue to us. Now, if people are concerned about the backyards, there's the possibility of being a small shed in their backyard to keep their landscaping tools, things like that. Others have had friendly arrangements with their neighbors to go around. And that is how we've dealt with it in the past.
Okay, I know it's, you know, as I've noted, Mr. Ponce raised it before. It's been raised again now by Mr. Grant. And those of us who live in single-family dwellings take it for granted. You walk up your driveway with this stuff and into the backyard, but when you don't have a driveway alongside your home that you can break things of, I can see where it would be concerned. And, you know, I sympathize with the residents above in Caligero Estates. I'd like to see their concerns addressed. I'd like to see the parking addressed, and I think I'd still like to see this matter addressed as well.
Thank you. Any comments from members of council? Yes, Councilor Peter Aniho.
Thanks, Your Worship. And I guess to yourself, to the representative, we listened earlier to Mr. Hugo Lance and Mr. Grant talk about the fact that parking is currently in issue. I'm wondering actually how you feel, whether or not it's perceived as an issue or whether it's an inadequate in your opinion.
For the existing residents?
For the existing residences.
The parking, there is minimal parking on site. There are some concerns, and typically is in the laneway unit area. The parking requirements, we have met the parking requirements of the planning department. And there were several discussions about that when the plan was developed. And at that time, we preferred to proceed the way it was and staff.
Okay, Councilor Aniho?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. And I guess just to follow up, I mean, I hear you talk about the current development and saying that, you know, there's going to be parking, they have parking in the garages, and then they also have space for perhaps two cars in the driveway, so that these people should be taken care of. But I think it's the existing people that we have to think of. And, I mean, perhaps they were, you know, perhaps they were misled, perhaps they misread the information, you know, outside of the fact that there was going to be two parking spaces. I mean, were these ever perceived by the residents that lived there to be visitor parking? And if they were, then perhaps there would be an honest on the developer to provide some visitor parking, especially if you know that it's currently a problem for your existing homeowners. Have you ever considered, I guess, making a parking lot for the people that live there right now?
No, absolutely not.
Would you consider it?
It's something we can discuss with staff.
Would we be able to discuss it at this time before we move forward with the townhomes? I think that's what Mr. Hugo and Mr. Grant were asking for, because I don't understand where we'd go if it doesn't go as part of the design.
I'm not exactly sure how you would want me to address. Would you, I don't have the authority to authorize that sort of a change to this design.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor Aniho?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So if we do vote defer, then he would be, Mr. Clark would be able to go back and speak to the developer and get authority to come back to this council. The concerns raised by Mr. Grant and Mr. Hugo are highlighted by something Mr. Clark just said. He said when that development that Mr. Hugo and Mr. Grant say the parking was promised was, came before the council of the day, that the current parking concerns that are existing now were raised at the time, and you chose to go ahead with it as it is anyway. Did I understand you correctly?
The first part that you said, I don't think that was accurate.
You just said that when the plan that Mr. Hugo and Mr. Grant are now saying is inadequate for parking, that you, that staff raised those concerns at the initial planning stage, but you went ahead with, you chose to go with the plan that is sitting there now.
Now, there were discussions between us and staff about the layout of the development.
Was it maybe that there would be potential problems?
No, 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 that the way that the site plan, the subdivision plan was laid out, that it was a new type of design for Niagara Falls, and that it was designed to meet the city standards.
So what were the concerns at the time? There were no concerns that the parking would not be?
There was discussion about the design of the subdivision.
Well, then, take that a step further. What were the discussions that these news might not be adequate? Because it would seem to me that there's something here that says to me that in the earlier discussions, maybe the concerns that have come to light with Mr. Grant and Mr. Hugo were known, but this was the plan that went forward anyway. Am I incorrect?
No, it's, this process took place better part of ten years ago, and I wasn't clear to all the discussions. But there were several different, several different designs done with respect to this development. And it was a process that had been mentioned that there were high-rise buildings that initially had been proposed on this site. And then that was, when we went through the public meeting and discussion processes, it was decided that that was not appropriate for this development. And there were several iterations of this, this design as it stands now before it was actually approved. That's the discussions I'm talking about, and that there were public meetings, discussion with staff, and this was decided by us and by staff that this was the appropriate design.
And through you, Mr. Grant?
I'm sorry. And at that time, it wasn't interpreted to be, that there would be parking issue. The design was?
Well, I agree with you, Mr. Clark, because at that time, the residents thought you were putting two parking lots on either side of Stone Gate, if I understand Mr. Hugo and Mr. Grant correctly. So I understand you're being able to sell to the residents, there's not going to be a problem, because perhaps they thought those alternative lots were going to be built.
With all due respect, my recollection was that it had been discussed as being commercial. If there was a parking lot there, perhaps it was a store with parking.
Through you, Mr. Matt and Mr. Darbison, who was here ten years ago. Mr. Darbison, Mr. Grant, Mr. Hugo, talk about having a site plan or a plan that shows those to be visitor parking. Do you have recollection of that? Because they seem to be quite informed.
My recollection was is that there was an either-or situation. I described that either a commercial development or it was going to go to housing. That is my recollection. I think that is deferred.
Commercial or housing never parking?
Well, the parking was a, was a parking requirement for the commercial useless. I don't recall any visitor parking being proposed on, off of Stone Gate, other than commercial parking lots.
Okay.
That's my recollection.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Fisher?
I just have one question. I think this is, are the units?
The middle units are approximately thirty feet wide?
No, fourteen.
If you could just bear with me, I could refer back to one of my colleagues.
Living area.
Sorry, the middle units are about, the bungalow units, the one-story, about fifteen-hundred square feet in the middle, and the M units are about sixteen-hundred square feet.
Okay. Oh, do I read in here that nine-hundred-and-sixty-nine square feet per dwelling unit? What is the unit around the area?
These designs were actually taken from the designs that are in Block Forty-nine, which are adjacent to?
And they have three square feet?
Fifteen and sixteen-hundred square feet.
And what about the homes on January Drive and that? How big are they?
Well, they're enormous compared to these ones.
So, and other areas near this development? So these would be the smaller units, am I right?
The units that are in the center of our development, just to the north, are probably comparable to that size as well.
Somewhere in there, there's more like twenty-one-hundred square feet, am I right?
Yes, that's true. Yeah.
So this is one of the smaller units. And they're backing onto the very, very large homes, which are probably six, seven-hundred.
There's definitely, there's no question that these units are significantly smaller than any of the houses that are in Caligero Estates. That's understood.
And what size are the garages? Single or?
All of the units are double-car garages. And I'm sorry, actually, there was a comment that said that only two cars would be
that said that only two cars would be able to be parked in the driveway. It's a double width, so four cars could park in the driveway.
Have you put a driveway wider than the garage?
It would rather be one car behind the other.
So the depth is more than 20 feet off the road?
It's...
Step back.
11 meters. You said 33 feet.
Yes, it's 11.75 meters, which is about 35 feet.
Are there any other questions from members of council or persons present with respect to the presentation this evening? No other questions? And if not, then the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning amendment is now concluded. In pleasure of council. Councilor Angelou?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As soon as you said to me, if any agent says to you, I do not have the authority to talk to you about the concerns raised, I have to go back to our developer. I would like to see them be able to go back to the developer and talk to them and come authorized to give changes that council's looking for. I think there's been enough concerns raised this evening, and a large amount of the residents that live in that San David subdivision that I'd like to see defer. So the questions answered, I mean, asked by the residents are answered, and when the agent has the authority to come back and answer for changes.
Make that motion.
Absolutely.
Seconded by Councilor Ray. There's no debate on the motion. We have two conflicts deferred. Councilor Thompson, Councilor Maves. So you've heard the question. All of them in favor? And, yes, sorry, Councilor Harry?
Yes, it is. Thank you very much. The matter is deferred.
Mr. Clark, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a gas bar convenience store at 7209 Drummond Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, May 11, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property. Question, anyone who wants notice of the, anyone who wants notice of the passage in the zoning bylaw amendment or participate in any site plan process if applicable, shall leave their name on the sign and sheets outside the council table.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll ask the planning director to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Darbison?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is a conversion of an existing gas station, automobile service center, into a gasoline bar and to the meat store. The subject lands are located on the intersection of two arterial roads, McCloud Road and Drummond Road. Proposed applications replace the existing automobile service station with the gasoline bar and a retail convenience outlet. The land is currently a general commercial which does not permit a gasoline bar. The applicant is requesting a site-specific automobile service station and gasoline bar zoning to fit both of these uses. This is the site plan of the project. As I'll get to a little bit of detail later, but the intent is to redevelop the entire site, put the smaller commercial use into the corner, and provide, open up the center of the site for maneuvering, control ingress and egress, and provide standard landscape. In terms of the official plan is designated for minor commercial purposes. If official plan directs the gasoline bars and automobile service stations to be located at arterial roads within commercially designated areas, this site is at the intersection of two arterial roads. Proposed redevelopment of the site represents a substantial improvement over certain site conditions, in that ingress and egress to the site will be improved through the installation of proper curving. Landscape will be, landscaping will be added where none currently exists. On-site traffic circulation will be improved, and a proper parking area will be provided for the convenience store, reducing any off-site traffic impacts that may have occurred in the past. In terms of zoning, the is zone general commercial, which delivers a gas bar by site-specific AES zone, requesting accommodation for produce. Convenience stores have become common accessory uses to gasoline bars in recent years. The store will be located, as I indicated, to the northwest corner, clearing out the rest of the site door, including parking, traffic circulation, and landscape. The Enemmy Myla will need to be tailored site specifically to the size of the site and the location of buildings, and therefore many of the standards will need to be tailored to, to implement this design. In terms of conclusions, the proposal is to rezone the lands for the two new uses proposed, meets the official plan criteria for gasoline bar developments, and the appearance of the site and adjacent streetscaping will be subsequently improved. The new building structures and the interaction of landscaping, on-site traffic circulation, and ingress and egress will be approved. Our recommendation this evening that this proposed zoning be approved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darbison. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in tearing the missile board, dismissing any referral that it receives if the party has not made an oral written submission at this public meeting. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this bylaw amendment? Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Having seen none, the council will now hear from the applicant or his representative. Please come forward. And for the record, please be kind enough to state your name and address.
Good evening, Your Worship, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is James Webb. I'm a professional land use planner, speaking on behalf of the applicant.
Yes.
Also with me tonight is Mr. Bob Reed. Bob is with Pioneer Petroleum. He's the project manager that's managing this specific redevelopment.
Is it Reed? Sorry?
Bob Reed. R-E-I-D.
Thank you very much.
Just a very brief comment. We've had a busy agenda tonight. Just very quickly, has been indicated by your planning director, Pioneer's intent for this property is to do a comprehensive redevelopment. They're going to take down what is an old dilapidated store. They're going to remove the underground storage tanks and do a complete redevelopment of the property. A new state-of-the-art facility, a new state-of-the-art underground storage tanks. To do this, it does require a rezoning of the property in order to put in place the necessary zoning regulations, and your planning director has outlined the specifics of what it is that we need to do on the property. We've reviewed zoning regulations. We're in agreement with what's contained in the staff report. And I think, Your Worship, at that point, that's all I really wanted to say. If there are any questions from council, I'd be pleased to answer them at this time.
Good. Thank you very much. Any members of council wish to ask Mr. Webb or Mr. Reed a question? No, members of the public, I guess there's nobody here that way. So at this point then, I'll conclude the public meeting with respect to the application. In the pleasure of council. Councilor Thompson?
Yes, I think this is a great project, taking an old dilapidated piece of property, putting some greening and proper access in and out. I think it'll be a great improvement for the corner, and I would move the approval.
Okay. Seconded by Councilor Maves. Okay, any discussion further? Having seen none, we'll call the vote. All of them in favor? No, it's passion and honesty. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you for coming. Mr. Clark, could you be kind enough to introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to recognize an existing apartment dwelling and to permit expansion of the parking lot located at 6911 and 6921 Barker Street and 619 Dorchester Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, May 11, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property. In question, anyone who wants notice of the passage in the zoning bylaw amendment or to participate in any site plan process if applicable, shall leave their name on the sign and sheets outside the council table.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peter. Once again, I'll ask the director of planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Darbison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is a photo of the subject lands. The proposal is currently a non-conforming use. The applicant proposed to properly zone the use for apartment use and take it as non-conforming status. The subject lands are comprised of, on the north side of the holdings, it's a single-family lot, and on the south side, there's an apartment building and a closed parking lot. The idea is to take the back part of the single-family lot, make it into parking, and provide better-located parking for the apartment building itself. So the apartment building is 12 units in size. It's located on two properties, just to address Barker Street, a single-family home, front side of Dorchester Road. And by way of a future severance application, the rear yard of the single-family property will be split off and merged with the apartment building lands to provide additional parking for this apartment dwelling unit. The closed zoning is residential R5A, is a R5A density zone, and will be applied to the apartment lands and the rear portion of the single-family home lands. The single-family home will be left as it is, although on a smaller piece of property. There, this is the site plan for the proposed development. The apartment building is shown in ground. It covers up, it's, it's mistletoe addressed on two lots. The small actual area to the rear of that apartment building will be expanded and a full parking lot created to the rear. There's a bit of parking currently provided at the intersection of Dorchester Road and Barker Street, and that parking will be removed. It's very, a very dangerous situation to have parking there in any event. The property is designated for residential purposes. Apartment buildings are permitted where sites have convenient access to arterial roads and are located in proximity to neighborhood commercial areas. The apartment building has existed for a considerable period of time, and the apartment building is at a scale that is compatible with surrounding neighborhood. Remove the parking at the corner of Dorchester Road and Barker Street and replace it with landscaping will certainly improve the apartment's compatibility with surrounding single-family dwellings. The site has frontage on a material road, which is Dorchester, and is enclosed proximity to the commercial areas along that line. In terms of zoning, the applicant has requested a whole family residential zone in order to recognize the existing building location, lot size of parking, site-specific zoning provisions may be included in the zoning bylaw. And in terms of parking, the existing 12-unit apartment building actually has 11 spaces currently provided. The applicant is proposing to increase those spaces to 12, but typically parking would be provided at a higher ratio of 16 spaces. The site does not afford that many parking spaces, but certainly there is an improvement to provide one space for every apartment dwelling in that building. Site time control will be necessary to ensure that the impacts of the proposed parking lots are mitigated with respect to this surrounding residential lands. It's our conclusion that the residential zoning bylaw amendment can be supported. It places the existing apartment building under appropriate zoning category, improves the provision of parking, and eliminates a very unsafe parking condition at the intersection of Dorchester and Barker. Again, site time control would be needed to ensure that the new parking lot can be disowning, matters such as lighting, smart water management, can be addressed. And site time control is the only way to ensure those things can be addressed. We did receive some concerns from a neighbor, and this is a proposal that can be used to resolve any of those types of concerns. Those are our conclusions and our recommendations this evening is to support the proposed zoning and to allow further discussion to take place on this site time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darbison. Members of the public again are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in the tearing missile board, dismissing any referral that it receives if the party has not made an oral or written submission at this public meeting. The council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter on the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Please come forward. And for the record, please be kind enough to state your name and address.
My name is Janine Sprecher. I live at 6009 Dorchester Road.
Welcome.
Mayor Salsi, a member of the council, senior staff. As I've stated, I live at 6009 Dorchester Road, directly north of the residential building being rezoned to allow for parking lot to be used for neighboring apartment buildings. We do support proper parking for the apartment building, but we do not, we do support taking parked cars off the road. We have no objection to this rezoning as long as our most immediate concerns are dealt with. To our understanding, this is all for the addition of one extra parking spot. At the present time, there is parking for 11 cars. Firstly, we have come to appreciate all the green space around us that we have lived for 23 years. We realize that replacing green grass with blacktop could make things a little uncomfortable for us. Blacktop, not only unattractive, produces huge amounts of heat reflection, as you can see from the pictures provided. The proposed parking lot will sit directly in full sun, and as we sit directly to the north of this spot, we already feel the drainage effects, the direct southernly exposure. Blacktop will only make this worse. If you must add paving, then at least add mature and fast-growing shade trees on the south side, casting shade northwards over this lot. Our second concern is our privacy. As you will see from the photos provided, all three of our bedrooms have windows facing this parking lot, and we worry that flashing lights from oncoming parked vehicles will affect our sleep. Sound from car doors slamming or engines turning over and parking lot socializing could also become a problem. We propose a higher, more private fence, say eight feet, board-on-board, and have a landscape with mature shrubs and trees, deciduous and evergreen, and have these plantings spaced efficiently to block some of these, some of these lights and some of these sounds. Also, we would prefer the pavement to be spaced further from the fencing lines than is required. We have estimated that at least six or eight feet separation with green space would look better and get plenty of room for the suggested landscaping to grow. Drainage is another major concern. These problems provided will illustrate the lot, these pictures provided will illustrate the lot directly to the north of us. Former Diamond Jubilee School is of higher grade. The residential lot directly to the south of us is lower in elevation, but then the next property, the apartment building, is higher again in elevation, as you can see in the pictures. Adding this large amount of blacktop will not help with the natural drainage we have come to appreciate. We do not have a wet lot or basement, and would like to keep it that way. Perhaps some storm drainage will offset all this extra water runoff. Next, we would like to illustrate a potential problem with snow removal and drainage to the landscaping and fencing. As you can see in the photos attached, the existing wire fencing next to the current parking lot has been consistently damaged from pillings of snow and ice. Ensuring a good separation of green space will also ensure this problem will not spread to our fencing. As you can see, the small amount of separation that now exists is clearly not enough. Lastly, we are concerned about the current situation with the garbage dumpster. We are also worried about where the new location of the dumpster will end up. Will it be moved against my fence and property? We support the dumpster staying where it is, where it now exists, and certainly would be concerned if it were to be moved closer. I use my shed every day, and would not, and would have to walk past this unsightly and smelly object, not to mention the persistent problem with bees, flies, and the noise of lids lifting and dropping. We use our patio and deck regularly and like to entertain. This dumpster would only be a nuisance to us and our guests. This dumpster should already be in total enclosure and should be at least enclosed in a zoning where to be approved. We are not asking you to place this dumpster closer to our neighbor adjoining the property on Barker Street. Thank you for protecting our rights.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Sprecher. Mrs. Sprecher, appreciate you being here. Perhaps our director of planning could address some of these concerns with respect to the site plan control and any of those discussions that have taken place?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we were aware of many of these types of concerns. Therefore, our second recommendation was to allow those concerns to be resolved through further discussions with the neighbors and the applicant. There are all real concerns. The lighting, as I mentioned, the drainage, the location of the garbage container, all those are matters that are, need to be discussed with the developer and the applicant. And therefore, that's the focus to resolve those matters.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Peter Angelou?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a question to Mr. Darbison. And I noticed that on Schedule Two that the applicant has submitted, it shows that there's a distance separation of 1.524 meters from an actual parking stall to the neighbor at 6099 Backlight. I'm wondering actually if there's, if there's a setback requirement from a parking lot from an R5 zoning to an R1 piece of property.
Okay. Mr. Darbison, could you answer a question for us?
You know what, I don't want to guess, and I don't know the answer to that question. I know in this particular case, we try to maximize landscaping, fencing, and so forth where we have multiple uses in single-family properties. We're dealing with a very tight situation here. We are, we are looking to provide a landscaping strip, certainly a fence, but because of the... We are looking to provide a landscaping strip, certainly a fence, but because of the trying to actually improve the parking on this lot, I don't think you could achieve a very, you know, standards that you would normally achieve in a brand-new subdivision. So, we're trying to do the best we can on a very small site. The provision of parking was our major concern because a little bit of landscape strip would be appropriate for snow storage in the wintertime, but the buffering really should be done by a fence, and therefore, I don't think you're going to get the green space that you would typically get. However, there's the notion of providing some trees, and that certainly could be provided in the landscape strips.
Yes, Councilor Peter Angelo?
Thank you, Worship. I guess that's part of where I was going, and I mean, if the developer is proposing to only leave four feet on, I guess, what would be two-thirds of the north of the parking lot, where does all the snow go?
Mr. Darvison, can you answer that, or we'll leave that to the applicant, possibly?
No, that's -- in all cases, you need to provide some storage for snow, and around the perimeter of this parking lot, there are some areas for snow storage. The developer may want to answer this question a little more detail. Sometimes apartment owners do provide for snow clearing and removal of snow, but I'll ask Mr. Sinclair to answer that more fully.
Thank you, and certainly between zones, we do have requirements for screening and landscaping, Councilor, and I appreciate your point, so we'll see if that would be addressed. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? Anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Okay, we'd like to ask the applicant to come forward, please, or his representative. Mr. Sinclair? Welcome.
Worship members of council, pleased to be here. Insofar as the site plan is concerned, we obviously have to have a site plan, and well, Mrs. Sprecher, we'd love to have you involved in the process, and we can certainly work with her to make it -- do the best we can with it, obviously. I'd just like to say this, I mean, I agree with the report, obviously, it sort of supports us on the application, but originally, we bought the property to the north, and our thinking was that we -- this building is small, one-bedroom units, and we would like to convert it to a condominium. This was our thinking, so I brought an application for severance, and I met with Ken Mack and Andrew Bryce, and they indicated that you'd have to, obviously, have to rezone the property because it's residential, have to rezone it to permit the parking. And I think Ken Mack, he pointed out that there is a major problem, obviously, in Dorchester, although we've never had any accident. We've owned the building for twelve years, there's never been any accidents on a Dorchester, but it is not a good situation the way it is, and I think this is going to improve, obviously, improve the situation, certainly make it a lot better. But we will be bringing an application for a condominium, conversely. I just want to make sure you're aware of that, or we just stray. But I think the -- we can work with the neighbor, obviously, we'll have trees and so forth, and it is a tight situation anyway, it's not the best, but it's certainly going to improve the situation, it's a logical addition to the property, and it's a nice building, and we don't have any problems with parking. A lot of people don't have cars because they're just one-bedroom units, and there are older people there. I'm afraid to answer any questions, but we'll certainly work with Mrs. Sprecher and any other neighbors and make it a good project.
Members of council, any questions of the applicant? Councilor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thank you, Worship. And I guess through yourself to Mr. Sinclair, I just want to say that I think it's, you know, very honorable that you want to, I guess, make the situation better, and I do agree with the rezoning of the application. I just want to make sure that we have all our ITs crossed and our I's added, I guess.
Sure.
And as I look at the site plan, and just to bring up the concern of the neighbor, I don't actually see the garbage, so I'm wondering if perhaps you know, or you have an idea of where you're going to be placing the garbage?
I have no idea. I'd certainly work with you, with the staff, and with Mrs. Sprecher, try to get it in the best possible location.
Okay. The other question I have was just in regards to the parking stalls on Part Three, and I'm wondering why you have them at an angle. Are you expecting -- well, obviously, you're expecting cars to park forward, and then would they back up and reverse northerly and then drive out southerly? Is that what you would expect?
I guess they'd have to back up, for sure, obviously, yeah. I'm not sure. Al Haywood did the plan, so he probably felt that that was the best way to do it for the staff.
Because it looks as though they're along the same lines as the parking stalls in Part One, so again, I'm just wondering why they would be angled. I would think that backing out would be harder.
That would actually be better.
Would be a harder --
But again, we can change, we can make changes on that if you have.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions of members of council, or those present with regard to the application? Mr. Sprecher, any concerns for the three Mr. Sinclair's comments?
Well...
Point of clarification?
I like, you know, we have blacktop.
Yes, please come forward.
You know, I could --
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Well, will things be discussed before any of this stuff?
Okay.
Do you want to be first, or put in, and we can really vote it?
No, maybe you'll get part of the part of the --
Okay. So, Mr. Sprecher, we're talking about site plan control, which will give you the ability to give input to work with the opponent and to see what comes to mutual satisfaction.
While we have drainage, we --
Yes, yes, all that would be included.
These things will be done. We can do the light, and we can object to the changes, and the council can be helpful. I think it's a draw.
Yeah, we'll just elaborate that. Mr. Sinclair, if you wouldn't mind, I'm going to have the -- actually, Mr. Darvison, would you be kind enough to explain the purpose and how we control site plans and what will happen from here?
Yes. There's two processes. One is a land use permission, and that's what we're doing tonight, attacking a building and zoning it the way it should be zoned. The other whole process is site plan control, and it's a process that deals with the whole other array of land use issues, and mostly impact issues. How, and you mentioned quite a few of them, what is the lighting going to be like associated with the lighting of the parking lot? What kind of landscaping is going in? What kind of fencing is going in? These are the kinds of matters that are not regulated through zoning, that are regulated through site planning. We have standards and guidelines and so forth that we would apply to developments, all forms of development, and the process of inviting the neighbors to participate in the site plan process is a very common one, because we can't anticipate all of your concerns, but you can voice those concerns at the site plan committee. Hopefully, that would answer your question.
And we'll work with you, our staff will work with you to get those concerns addressed. Thank you very much, and any other questions, members of council? Having seen none, then we'll conclude the meeting with regard to the, okay, the application. Moved by Councilor Fisher, seconded by Councilor Carrio. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, Nancy. Thank you very much. Mr. Clair, could you introduce the next item in the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to recognize an existing triplex at 477 Hickson Street. Notice was given by First Class Mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, May 11, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property in question, anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment or to participate in any site plan process if applicable shall leave their name on assignment sheets outside the council chair.
Thank you very much, and once again, I'm going to ask the director of planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Darvison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is an existing property, and it's currently used as a triplex. The application is to recognize the triplex properly in terms of zoning and permit a proposed parking arrangement on the site that's an improvement over the current arrangement. The subject plans are located on the south side of Leonard Lane at the corner of Hickson Street, and there's a laneway that also has an influence on the application. So, the applicant is requesting a zoning that ought to be changed to a proper mixed or three-zone to recognize the existing use of the land, which the triplex. The proposed parking arrangement will need to be also approved as part of the zoning. This is the site plan of the proposal. The building is located, obviously, with frontage on Hickson Street. There is a garage located at the rear, it's a double-car garage, so the application is proposing to utilize the spaces in the garage and adding two more, shown as spaces three and four. The subject plans are designated for residential purposes. Multiple dwellings are permitted within this designation where they are compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed high blocks forms with a purpose and intent to the efficient land as follows. The dwelling was originally constructed as a duplex and has been used as a fiveplex for an unknown period of time. The degree of harmony clearly exists between the dwelling and surrounding residential properties, and no building expansion is being proposed. The dwelling has three units, which can be supported by the surrounding infrastructure and will not adversely impact the neighborhood. Sufficient parking will be provided on-site. Zoning is intended to be changed from a three-family zone to a three-family zone. The zoning will recognize the current lot size and the setbacks of the dwelling and the garage. The garage does have a small approach on that laneway that I did describe, and an approachment agreement should be executed prior to the passage of the zoning bylaw to correct that situation. The current parking arrangement is not appropriate. The site inspection revealed that only -- the only parking available on the site was within a detached garage. However, that garage was being used for storage purposes. Therefore, residents of the building needed or had to park on city streets. The applicant is proposing to rectify the parking arrangement by making the garage available for parking and adding in two additional parking spaces. It's our conclusion that the proposed development is a good one, the proposed zoning can be supported, so we do need an approachment agreement to rectify that garage approachment. It's our recommendation, therefore, to approve the bylaw and to enter into an execution agreement for that particular garage. Those are our recommendations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darvison. Once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in the interim municipal board dismissing any referral that it receives if the party has not made an oral or written submission at this public meeting. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment at this time. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this bylaw amendment? Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Okay, at this point in, council will now hear from the applicant or his representative. Would you come forward, please, and just give us your name and address for the record?
My name's Ben Peelo, I live at 4115 May Avenue in Niagara Falls.
Thank you.
I'm Worship Mayor Ted Selcy, members of council, senior staff. I'd be honored to work with Ripley's Building, the Great Wolf Lodge, started two years ago, and since then, I've moved into the area right down the street. I love the homes there, and I've enjoyed doing significant cosmetic renovations to the house. I've met several people that have actually lived in that home before and saw how poorly it was managed for years, and we've completely redone all cosmetics, done new windows and everything. That house, when I moved in, that triplex was being used as a triplex, and as far back as neighbors that have lived in the area for eighteen, twenty-three, twenty-five years, they can remember it being a triplex for that long, and that's basically what I've come up with there. I've also got several of the homes that I've completely renovated, and if you -- I remember when I moved in the area, Mayor Selcy was actually doing the walk of the neighborhood, and that's the first time I saw you there, and I've enjoyed changing the neighborhood and taking one house on at a time, and it's been quite the process, and this is the continuation of it right here.
Appreciate the comment. True gentrification and redevelopment of the area, so no question. Thank you very much. And members of council, do you have any questions of the applicant? Okay, actually, well, we just closed the meeting first. Thank you very much, Mr. Prime, we appreciate that. The public meeting would expect that the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. In pleasure of council, Councilor Carrio, and seconded by Councilor Maves. Any discussion on the motion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, Nancy. Thank you very much. Mr. Clair, could you introduce the next item in the agenda, please?
The purpose of this next public meeting is for a draft plan of subdivision, and it's to receive information and allow the public to comment on the proposed subdivision, which is known as Fernwood Phase Two. It's located on Lundy's Lane, north side, west of Garner Road. Notice -- notification was given by First Class Mail on Friday, May 25, 2007, and to all owners of land within a hundred and twenty meters of the land to which the application applies. Any person who wants notice of the future zone, rezoning, meaning, and/or the future decision of council shall leave their name on the assignment sheets outside the council chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clair. The applicant will provide an overview of the draft plan of subdivision, and council will hear from any persons wishing to comment on the plan. There will, however, be no decision made at tonight's meeting, and council will consider all input and the recommendation report from staff at a future meeting. So, would the applicant please be kind enough to provide outline of the draft plan of subdivision? And have the applicant come forward to his representative, please? Mr. Brady?
Mayor, members of council, welcome. Your staff, thank you. This is the second phase of development, which is called Fernwood. Fernwood Phase One, as you can see on the plan that's up there, has already been approved. All of the area to the right, or east, if you will, which is not colored, has been approved by the interim municipal board, including just to the north of it, a large woodlot, which has been saved in its entirety, and it's in the process of being transferred to the municipality. This particular, the second phase, continues the -- a lot of the work that was done in the first phase. We have brought in some additional multiple-unit development townhouses and some, perhaps, some low-rise apartments in there. There was a major concern at the interim municipal board by the regional municipality of Niagara, the planning staff, and to ensure that there is a minimum of six units to the acre being created from this subdivision. That is what is being presented to you this evening in terms of a layout. It creates that amount of density which was wanted and desired and put in as a condition of the development at the time. There has been, and continues to be, the development along the southern flank of this development, a large berm, and the berm runs parallel to the railroad line. If you go down the property today, you can actually see the berm. It's there, it's in place, it's a part of the continuation of the first phase, so that there will be a berm running the full length of that property to protect the neighbors to the north from sound and vibration associated with the rail line, and there will be a sound attenuation wall on the top of it. Immediately to the north of that attenuation wall and berm, there will be a stormwater management system and a -- an area of ecosystem restoration, so there's a long, not traditional form of stormwater management system going in along that area. What that creates is an additional fifty-meter separator, so that there's fifty meters of area which will be used for stormwater management, planting of trees, et cetera, before you get to the back lots, and that's consistent for both Phase One and Phase Two, as you can see along that area. And in that area, in the middle, if you will, actually, right to the immediate right-hand side of the yellow area, you'll see that there's a park, a parquet, which adds as an access point, so there'll be an access point into that area, and there is a trail system which is being developed at my client's expense, which will run the full length of that area from the ground area, if you will, to the south, all the way up to Garner Road. So, you have that being created, and there's been a lot of discussion with the staff at a recent meeting of how we can create a very aesthetically pleasant way of having the stormwater management system integrated with that trail system. There is one other issue that's associated with this development, and that is to the north of Phase One, you'll see that there's an area which is controlled by the Ministry of Transportation. It's not owned by the ministry, it's owned by my client, but it's controlled by the Ministry of Transportation, and it's a potential highway link for Highway 20. We are proposing to use the exact same approach for that particular area as has been used in subdivisions further to the east in Niagara Falls, so the idea of having a road that runs immediately adjacent to that highway link and therefore providing for the setbacks that are required, and that's been discussed at some length with your staff, and I believe we have agreement in terms of that approach for that area. The lands to the north of that highway link, we're showing as a potential future subdivision. That potential future subdivision could only occur if there is a release of those, of that corridor. So, there's -- while we can certainly develop those lands to the north if there's a release of that corridor at some point in time in the future from MTO, and the designs that we've brought forward permit -- are permissive, if you will, for that, that area to the north cannot move forward until such time as MTO makes up their mind as to whether or not they want to utilize -- want to utilize that particular area as a highway link. Those are all my comments. I would like, if at all possible, if there are questions that are raised by members of the public, to be able to come back and perhaps try to answer them.
At this time, however, I'm going to ask members of council if they have any questions of the applicant's consultant. Or the council? No? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Brady. Anyone wishing to comment on the plan, please come forward. I'd like to ask those speaking to give their name and address before offering comments. And as required by the Planning Act, be advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting or a written submission prior to counsel approving or refusing the plan may result in the anterior municipal board dismissing any appeal that you may file against the decision of counsel. So at this time, I'm going to ask for input from the public. Is there anyone who wishes to give input with respect to this application? Please keep in mind, there's no decision made tonight. We're going to incorporate your comments, hopefully, with the developer. And anyone here present who wishes to make a comment, please, could come forward, sir? And once again, for the record, please be kind to state your name and address.
My name's Peter Van Cleef from 9387 Lundy's Lane.
Welcome.
I'm the owner of Camp Park Resorts. Good evening, your worship, and the council staff. I've got concerns, I'll just make it short. I've got some concerns. I've been in business for 25 years at Camp Park Resorts, and it concerns over the successful continuation of my camping establishment and guarantees to continue having campfires, karaoke music, et cetera, most specifically the sound and smoke, which are part of the camping experience, which may impact on my neighbors in the new subdivision. I'd just like to know what kind of guarantees I would have in this regard, if I could, and also just a little concern on the development on the 43-unit apartment building that's proposed in this development, not like that.
Okay, that's a little high density for this subdivision. We'll try to get your questions answered.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone other than the applicant now wishes to come forward, please? Once again, for the record, be kind of pleased to give your name and address.
Jane Grandoni, 4810 Aurora Number One, Garner Road.
Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I have a short letter here. Mr. Chairman, members of council, I am formally requesting that the parties to the OMB, including myself and two involved neighbors, and Mr. Wilson, the city planner involved with this subdivision, go on-site to confirm the location of the stakes for the future homeowner lot lines adjacent to the forest and the location of the survey stakes for the forest dirt line. We also request that this be done as soon as possible and prior to any further approvals and prior to registration of either Phase One or Two of the plan of subdivision. A motion from council to implement this request would be appreciated to ensure accurate fulfillment of the conditions of approval for this subdivision. Thank you. And I'm opposed to Mr. Romano's request to further expand the boundaries in this area.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grandoni. Mr. Brady, would you like to come forward to address those concerns, please? Yes, before we do that, is there anyone other than any other -- yes, I'm sorry, would you come forward? Thank you. I didn't realize you're sitting there. Your name and --
I'm hiding behind the podium. My name's Sean Galbraith, 5300 Commerceport West, 199 Bay Street, Toronto. I'm a land use planner with the law firm Stike &amp; Elliott. We're the solicitors for Red Pass Sugars, operators of the facility south of Fernwood Phase One at 5855 Garner Road. I have a letter outlining our client's concerns at all.
Thank you.
But just to summarize, our clients have a concern regarding the impact of the noise and vibration of their facility on Phase Two, and would like to request that any conditions of approval for Phase Two include a provision requiring that the studies required by the minutes of settlement for Phase One just be expanded to include the Phase Two lands.
Okay, thank you. That's okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We have your submission, thank you. Is there anyone, again, who would like to make a comment other than the applicant? Okay, Mr. Brady, would you come forward now, please?
I spoke to Mr. Van Cleef earlier today, and I tried to explain to him that in this particular instance, his area, which is to the south of the rail line, is being protected considerably more than was the case when Orchard Grove Extension abutted the KOA campgrounds in the past. The way that it was resolved between the KOA campgrounds in the past and Orchard Grove was that there was a fence, and simply a fence put in place. What we have in this particular circumstance is, as I had mentioned to you earlier, we have a berm, we have a sound attenuation fence on the top of that berm, we have approximately 95 meters of separation between the campground, when you add the area that the rail line includes, and the land that's being used for the stormwater management pond. So unless there are very large campfires that occur on the Camp Park Resorts area, I would think it would be very difficult for there to be any issue, since there certainly has been no issue with the KOA campground and the fact that a simple fence has dealt with that. The other issue that was raised by Mr. Van Cleef dealt with densities of development, and I can assure you that the densities of development on this plan are in conformity with what has been required by the anterior municipal board and by the regional planning department in terms of their pursuit of higher densities. The area that, the brown area in the southwest corner is an area which could well be developed as for some low-rise apartments, but it may also be developed for town housing, and that's the kind of zoning that we would want put on that property at the time that that's put in it. Ms. Grandoni has given you a short letter, which I have not seen, so I'm not exactly sure what it has to say, but nonetheless, what she's mentioned is that she seems to be concerned with the southerly lot line of the woodlot. That was dealt with in a great deal of detail at the anterior municipal board. I gave testimony at the anterior municipal board concerning that particular line, the method by which was used to determine that line. We had a biologist assisting us, the region had a biologist assisting them in terms of establishing that line, and if I remember correctly, I actually penciled out on a board how drip lines were measured at the anterior municipal board hearing in response to a question that was asked by Ms. Grandoni's lawyer at the time. We're confident that that line is in the appropriate location, and that Dugan and Associates, which is the biologist for the region, have been involved with that, and the region is confident that it's in the appropriate location, and there are conditions in the draft plan of subdivision to ensure that it's in that particular location. I'm not certain that there will be anything gained by Ms. Grandoni, or Rick Wilson, for that matter, coming onto the property to determine where the stakes are located. I suggest that Ms. Grandoni talk to the region and to their consultant on that matter. Stike &amp; Elliott, we've been dealing with, not, sorry, Red Pass Sugars through Stike &amp; Elliott, we've been dealing with for some time in terms of the noise and vibration that has come out of their plant. There is a very detailed study, which is underway, and I'm sure that the representative of Stike &amp; Elliott is well aware of that. It was put on as a condition for the plan of subdivision in Fernwood Phase One, and it's continuing to be brought forward. And before there can be any release of conditions, and those conditions were the ones that were required by Stike &amp; Elliott, that the studies have to be done and have to be dealt with and signed off by not only the Ministry of the Environment, but by themselves. The area in question that we're talking about now is a considerable distance from the Red Pass Sugars, and I'm going to ask, I'm going to discuss whether or not there's a need for this kind of condition with our noise consultant. And when we're back in front of counsel in terms of looking for approval of this development, at that time, I will have an answer from the noise consultant to determine whether or not the request that's being made this evening is appropriate under the circumstances.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Brady. Okay. Additional comment, Ms. Grandoni? Okay, please come forward.
I thought this would be a very simple request, because I've done it for forests that I haven't put the time and money into, as I have in this one, and it's been beneficial. I don't know what they're afraid of. I thought I was going to try and avoid getting into the story, but I guess I have to tell the story. The OMB met on Monday, November the 6th. It recessed for three days and came back on the Friday. During that three-day recess, Mr. Byron Henshaw and Mr. Dugan, but not our expert, went on-site, and I decided to call Mr. Henshaw, and he was on his way to the forest on November the 7th, the Tuesday, and he refused to call the developer to get permission for me to go with them. So the two experts of the region and the developer met on-site, established yet another drip line, because there was already one established. They established another one. And the map they gave us didn't show the forest at the hearing, it showed the drip line, but, and I got, and the other thing you have to understand is that the only parties that signed the minutes of settlement was the region and the developer. Mr. Becker and myself chose not to, and when I see this map, I'm glad I didn't. And I can show this to the council. This is dated December the 19th, 2006. And I have some concerns, and it shows the lot lines of the homeowner into a small edge of the forest, and I have concerns with that. And I would like to see it, I would like to go on-site and see the stakes. It reminds me of a similar situation with Deerfield. I hope not, but I would please like to go on-site. I've put three years, going on four years of my life into this, I don't think this is a major request. What are they afraid of? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I can take it elsewhere if you don't want to show me the stakes. Thank you very much.
Mr. Brady, you have that information, I guess, for --
I'm sorry. Our lawyer asked no questions. That's part of the problem. There's a long story to that, too, but that's what happened. She asked no questions at all. Mr. Brady is wrong.
Ms. Grandoni is correct, her lawyer did not ask any questions of me in terms of the evidence that was provided. She did ask for copies of the map, which is what we had provided to Ms. Grandoni at the time, and we were certainly there. There were questions asked of me by one of Ms. Grandoni's contemporaries that dealt with the drip line, and it went through in some detail. I'd also point out that one of the clauses that was required and has been put in this particular draft plan of subdivision, and that is that there is to be a fence along that boundary, that there's actually going to be a fence along the wooded area on both sides, and that fence will demarcate the area that is to be left alone. And Ms. Grandoni is well aware that the biologist that was retained by the region in this particular matter was the biologist that she had been discussing this at detail with. So we're confident that the woodlot exists in the location that it's shown, everyone else is confident that it exists in the location that it's shown, and more importantly than that, this matter's closed. This matter was before the anterior municipal board. In your package, I believe, is a copy of the actual anterior municipal board hearing and the evidence that was provided and the matters that was dealt with. So the anterior municipal board dealt with the issue of the woodlot as a part of Phase One. Phase One is complete in terms of its draft plan conditions, there are no further conditions that can be added to it. We're in the process of registering that particular area. Now, what we're here to discuss this evening is Phase Two. And Phase Two, as you can see by looking at the map that's on the wall or on your screens, does not touch the woodlot at all. So therefore, the woodlot issue has been resolved to the satisfaction of everyone who attended at the anterior municipal board hearing, and certainly Ms. Grandoni was there for those days, had a lawyer in attendance, and while her lawyer didn't ask any questions, certainly some of her contemporaries asked questions on this topic, and from the developer's perspective, we feel the matter has been addressed and closed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brady. At this time, I'm going to conclude the meeting with respect to the draft plan of subdivision, and I'm going to ask for counsel. I'm sorry.
Sorry for that. I just wanted to offer, just so there's no confusion as to my point or my request, we're not looking for new studies being done, we're simply looking to have the Phase One studies that are already being done, just have the conclusions of the mathematical conclusions just expanded to include the Phase Two lands, given their adjacency to the Phase One lands. Thank you.
We've so noted that, thank you. So the meeting with regard to the draft plan of subdivision is now concluded, and there are motions to refer the comments received by the public to a staff consideration, led by Counsel Thompson, and seconded by Counsel Ainoni. Any comments with respect to the motion? No? All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried nationally. Thank you very much. Members of council, the next item on the agenda is miscellaneous planning matters, and the first item on the docket is the matter with regard to 4025 Dorchester Road in Rock Plaza. The applicant has heard of Scale Developments, and the agent is Michael Allen, in response to counsel's inquiries respecting an approval of the zoning by law amendment. We do have a memo from our director of planning dated June 8th. Mr. Darvison, do you wish to address that? I believe there's been some discussions in the meeting of minds, is that correct?
Yes, after our report, and also an alternative proposal was felt, and our panel was to support that.
Okay. So you have a recommendation before you, members of council, your pleasure. Counsel Thompson?
Yes, I would move the approval of the development from the site plan as proposed.
Yes, not, actually, just to qualify that, the recommendations are somewhat different, is that correct, Mr. Darvison?
Yes, the, notwithstanding the actual report of reservation in the package, the memo indicates that the covenant of the zoning by law would be amended.
So you moved the recommendation as amended?
Yes, I've had some discussions with Mr. Allen, so I don't worry about that.
Okay, and the second to that is Counsel Peter Angelo. Any discussion of the motion? Yes, Counsel? I'm sorry. Yes, I understood, so we'll get a second to that. Counsel Fisher and Counsel Peter Angelo, your comments, please?
Your worship, when the resoning application first came down, I think that counsel was trying to adhere to part of the neighbor's request with regards to the drive-through, and therefore counsel decided to put a covenant on the property, which would only allow them away in the house. I understand that that is being very restrictive, and that is what staff says. Further to that, I'm wondering if counsel has the power to, I guess, put a covenant on the commercial zoning that would state that the drive-through would only -- on the commercial zoning that would state that the drive-through would only allow it to be open at certain hours. So, for instance, the drive-through would have to be closed in between midnight and 6:00 a.m. Your worship, I feel very strongly that we should have some type of restrictions on drive-throughs that about residential properties. This isn't the first time that I brought this up. In fact, about two years ago, we were dealing with a plaza that had two drive-throughs. At that time, I asked whether or not planning staff had any restrictions. They said that, no, we didn't. I said that I would like to report back, outlining perhaps what other municipalities do and some possible restrictions that we could have. It's been two years. I'm sure the report is coming. It just doesn't come to us yet. So, your worship, I feel very strongly that any time a commercial drive-through or bucks a residential property, that there should be some type of restriction in place. I'm wondering, I guess, whether through yourself through either planning or through yourself through legal, whether or not the city has the power to implement such a restriction that we can say what times the actual drive-through can be opened.
Thank you. Mr. Beaman, can you address that from the legal department, please?
I think there are some ways it could be achieved. I wouldn't strongly recommend against using covenants, but I think we could, we could come up with something through a bylaw that would deal with hours of operation of drive-throughs. There are a number of, some municipalities I know have dealt with it through zoning. That tends to be controversial, not favored by a lot of planners. And others have used various forms of the sort of business hours bylaws to try to restrict them. This is a new problem for me to face and I, seeing as the report is already coming, I suggest that I spend some time researching exactly how we go about it. But I think there are some ways we could achieve what Counselor Peter Angelo has in mind.
Okay, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yes. Your worship, in that case, then, I would ask the mover and the seconded if they'd like to include a friendly amendment to the motion to include a restriction in when the drive-through is actually open and prohibit the hours in between midnight and 6:00 a.m.
We have Counselor Thompson as the mover and Counselor Fisher as the seconded. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, thank you. I can appreciate people who live adjacent to drive-throughs are, and my comments that when the application came forward before, I was very concerned about the drive-through. I was surprised that the applicant was willing to suggest that it be one specific type of drive-through which is not as busy as some of the coffee shops that we're all familiar with. I was also impressed by the fact that they were willing to enclose the drive-through area and to also locate the order mechanism so it would not infringe on the, on the adjacent properties. I also was looking in the forum magazine that was sent to us indicating that there are all kinds of new powers in the new municipal act. For example, one question that came up here a little while ago, the local officials will be able to regulate the appearance and design features of a building. And it also mentions closing hours in this particular document. It says holiday closing hours, but if they're talking about hours, then that maybe there's an opportunity to research that. I, I'm, my objective making the motion is certainly to move the project forward, but not to cause any difficulty for the adjacent properties. And in fact, the individual, I believe, to the south of the development, which is closest to the drive-through, did not appear and did not have a problem with respect to the drive-through, which was surprising to me. But I'd like to probably have a report back and if anything does become a problem, there's always the opportunity for our council to deal with it through the staff and others. But there's no sense agreeing to that if we don't have the power to do it. So, I don't know how we would do that. I would ask the solicitor if he has any suggestions. Senator DeCher.
Mr. Beaman?
Yes, well, Mr. Chairman, I just had an opportunity to look at the new provisions of the municipal act that Counselor Thompson referred to. During the course of my career, these things have usually been dealt with hours of business operations, but generally, we were generally overridden by the retail business holidays act, as Counselor Thompson brought up in the recent amendments. And I've just been looking at section 148 of the act and it does look as if I might have been a little overly optimistic. The powers here in 148 provide that we can, a local municipality require the retail business establishment, which I guess this is one, we close the property on or all, or any of the days of the week during any time between 6:00 p.m. any day and 5:00 a.m. the next day, which would seem to restrict us from trying to close from, we could certainly close it from under that from 12 to 5:00 a.m., but not to 6:00 a.m. But the difficulty that the section presents to me is that it goes on in section four to say that this section, when I just read, does not apply to the sale or offering for sale by retailer of goods or services in the form of in connection with prepared meals or living accommodation. Now, I suppose the argument I would be faced with is that the establishment is offering prepared meals. However, the, I think that we could undertake to separate the idea of the window itself from the actual establishment and try to regulate the hours of it. However, I would not recommend trying anything beyond 12 to 5:00. Or at least, at any hour between 6:00 and 12:00 and 12:00 and 5:00 the next day. So, if you wanted to try from 5:00 to 12:00, we could, we could certainly do that. That would apply to all windows in the, in the city if we so desire.
Well, members of council, we do have the applicant here and we probably should ask the question, propose any hardship. We have a time issue that we're trying to deal with, but Counselor Peter Angelo?
Now, your worship, I just want to say, I mean, I understand, I understand the issue of time. I mean, I hope that, I hope that council will give this idea some serious consideration. Whether or not we move forward with this application, perhaps we should be looking at coming in with a restrictive bylaw for drive-throughs. I mean, I'd like to hear from the applicant as well, and I understand that time is, time is of the essence. I know from talking to the applicant that it is a Williams pub that's going in here. Williams pubs generally do not operate during that timeframe. That's why I was thinking it would be a general compromise of the residents to have the drive-through shut down during that time.
Let's ask the question.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comment. Can we have the applicant or his representative come forward, please? Mr. Allen? Could you give council some indication as to what the hours of operation would be if it would be limited with respect to the drive-through?
Well, I think it, back in April 30th, when we initially were speaking on this, I'm not at liberty to speak on behalf of Williams Coffee Pub. And a little surprised that we're even speaking here this evening. We've dealt with the drive-through issue over the past month. We've worked diligently with the planning staff and with the staff of the city. The word compromise was brought up and I felt that between the city and ourselves, a lot of compromises have been made with ourselves, with the neighbors, with a couple of neighbors in particular. But I think Mr. Thompson also made a very good point that I would like to reinforce in the fact that the neighbor that is directly adjacent to this drive-through, I have had the opportunity to speak to, not on complaint issues, but on complimenting us on what we're doing, and I wanted to reinforce that if he had any issues, that we would address them with him and the owners of the property, and he had no issues. I do respect the fact that, that drive-throughs could be, be an issue. Part of it in dealing with the planning department was looking at our property as somewhat more unique than perhaps the typical drive-through. And what I mean by that is the topography of this land. The drive-through itself is three and a half feet below the grade of the adjacent neighbors. My clients are, as dealing with the planning department, are doing more than 50 to 60% excessive landscaping than what would be required on this property, the fencing and so forth that we're putting up to it. So, I feel that our compromises have been, have been well put forth. I think that if the planning or the city and the staff wanted to pursue looking at some bylaw options with drive-throughs, I mean, that's great, but I don't want us to be the guinea pigs on this. I think if that was something that was to be dealt with, should have been dealt with back on the 30th of April and we could have dealt with it accordingly then.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Members of council, we don't have an amendment to the motion at this point, and perhaps Counselor Peter Angelo, you could make a motion after we deal with this matter. So, we do have a motion on the floor. I'm going to entertain that motion now unless somebody else wants to make a comment. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I, I'm sensitive to the concerns, but I would rather see a motion after this, come back and, and look at it generally throughout the municipality. There are some areas that have drive-throughs that are not adjacent to residential areas that would, could be restricted, and if you're going to do one, you better do them all. So, I think that's fairly far-reaching, so I'll let the motion stand, but I will support a report coming back.
Okay. Counselor Wayne, do you wish to make a comment?
Just a question. Were the property owners who were circulated on the original application circulated on tonight's meeting as well?
I can't answer that question. Mr. Clark, can you answer the question?
Do you mean the residents? No, because this wasn't a public meeting. It was more to answer the issues with regard to the restrictive covenant.
Counselor Wayne?
You know, knowing that, I have a problem with approving this now. You know, if they, if they aren't aware that this is coming back before us and they went away thinking that...
I believe there's been substantial discussion with the neighbors and their concerns. Mr. Darverson, can you address that for us, please? Any objections that they have their concerns dealt with?
The objections, well, the concerns raised at the original public hearing, I think, have been addressed. I mean, council did refer this matter of, two matters, parking, to stand an investigation of this restrictive covenant. That was our direction by the council. You know, we had the public meeting. Our original recommendation was to allow them to have drive-through back and council said, oh, we should look at this restrictive covenant. We didn't agree with this restrictive covenant, but since that time, the concerns remain the same, noise and so forth with respect to residential areas. It's always the same concerns. We did specifically go over and have further discussion with the adjacent residents. We were correct, as Michael tried to resolve these issues, especially coming up with ways and means of either sending buildings back or, in particular, the speaker box.
Mr. Clark?
I'd also like to say two things. Number one, the residents would be involved with site plan issues, so there's still the site plan process to go through. Number two, council did approve the rezoning. It didn't defer the rezoning, it approved it.
That's answered the question, I think. Counselor Wayne?
So, I'm just confused. Have the residents who came before us last time, have they had their concerns satisfied? Are they comfortable with what's now being proposed?
Mr. Darverson?
I can only answer that question. The council did approve the rezoning, subject to these two investigations, whether or not your decision resolved any of the resident concerns I don't know. Mr. Allen suggests that one party will, this probably has, I can't speak with respect to the others, but Mr. Iaia said, about, for site planning, this land, you permission will include a drive-through and if there are site plan matters that need to be addressed, the resident certainly will be involved in that. But if the council didn't drive through, or another public meeting, to address the resident's concerns.
Okay, we have a motion before us, members of council. I'm going to call the vote at this time. All those in favor? Hold your hands up, please. One, two, three, four, five, six. Opposed? One. Thank you. The motion's carried. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the planning staff come back with a report on, on whether or not we can restrict the operation of drive-throughs and perhaps they can take the information that they've gathered over the last two years and just add that to the existing report.
Good idea. Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Wayne. Any discussion on that? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the application for a commercial building facade improvement grant and revitalization grant with the Historic Doronville CIP. I'm really pleased to acknowledge the fact this is the first application presented by Patterson Funeral Home. We do have representatives from Patterson Funeral Home. Moved by Counselor Wayne, seconded by Counselor Aiononi. Any discussion? Yes?
Actually, Mr. Wayne, just like to say, I'm glad to see them come down here. I'm glad to see them utilize the intent of the CIP and I would encourage the downtown BIA owners to utilize the CIP grants, loads and incentives also. It falls in that court.
Thank you. And, okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Motion's carried, Nancy. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the request for removal of part lot control with regard to year for other states. A mover is seconded on that, please. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Mays. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion's carried. Also, sidewalk cafe license agreement extension with the Montana's Cookhouse. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Aiononi. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Again, another sidewalk license agreement with regard to Antica Pizza.
I'm sorry.
Sir, mover was Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Aiononi. Before the motion, all those in favor? Motion's carried, Nancy. Thank you very much. And the last one is a memorandum of understanding with the planning system in Niagara. As you know, members of council, the effort here, government, regional council decided to want to streamline the process and this is a protocol to do so. And I'd like the motion on the floor, please. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Aiononi. Any discussion? Having seen none? Counselor Thompson?
Thanks, your worship. I just want to say that for many, many years, actually since 1970, there's always been discussion and dialogue back and forth about improving the system, particularly in the planning area. And it always amazed me when we had to go through all of the process at the local level and the same process was duplicated at the, at the regional level. And the regional people had no feeling, no contact, and in most cases, never even visited the sites for many of these planning applications. So, I just wanted to compliment all the people who are involved in this very positive initiative. It's, it's certainly time-saving and is going to be, hopefully, one of some maybe further steps that can be taken to streamline the system, but this is one that has always been outstanding and it's, it's a pleasure to see this report.
That's correct and thank you, Counselor Thompson. We, I think the public is anxious to avoid duplication, whether it be from an application standpoint or the tax clerk's perspective, so this hopefully should streamline the process between the region and the city and municipalities. So, before the, the matter, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Any opposed? No? Motion's carried. Okay, thank you. Members of council, I have some comments this evening. I wanted to acknowledge the passing, as you know, the passing of Mrs. Edna Benio, mother-in-law of Counselor Jim DiDatti and actually wife of Steve Benio. And I'm really sad to say that the funeral took place today, but very difficult passing and we acknowledge and respect the, the loss of the family. Also, Angelina Decary, a mother of Ron Decary, who works at the service center. His mother passed away just recently. And as well, Queen Hayward, mother of Ian Hayward, and our municipal department, Works Department as well. In the passing, Mr. Fred Spencer, brother of Matt Spencer, who was a city employee at the city service center. Again, I heartfelt that, that to members of, through members of council are with the families involved and we mourn the losses of those loved ones. Moving on to other business, as you have no doubt heard, yes, Counselor Thompson?
Could I just add the name of Ron Graham? I was going to initially mention it because there was a presentation regarding, which has been deferred, I guess, regarding the Red Raiders. Ron Graham just passed away in the, last week, was in the paper, a gentleman who attended high school about the same time I did, but he was, without exception, one of the greatest basketball players that came out of this particular area, went on and played in the universities that he attended, ended up in California, but was a tremendous asset with N F C V I, the Red Raiders, and Jimmy Rose and his reign of basketball stars for many, many years. So, I, I see the family, some of them are still in the area and I'd like to include that.
Thank you and we'll try to get a, a letter to them as well. Thank you very much for that. And also, as you heard recently, Niagara Falls has officially been named one of Canada's Seven Wonders by C B C after their online rowing competition culminated in the final judging. We're proud to, of our placement in the final seven and I'd like to acknowledge the work of our residents, along with various individuals and groups that really took the reins and garnered lots of involvement in our community. On our end, Counselor Jim DiDatti and staff member Gail Morton are to be commended on the good work that they did getting the word out. I'd also like to make mention of the local media in Niagara Falls that readily participated and put their support behind naming Niagara Falls as one of Canada's Seven Wonders. In particular, Niagara Falls Review put forth an outstanding effort with banners and full-page advertisements to get the vote out. We are certainly very grateful for all their efforts from our community partners. I would like to also report to members of council and residents on another issue of interest, on the direction of council, city staff and I met with Minister Kaplan to discuss prevalent issues regarding the casino, its involvement in the community and the concerns of residents. The meeting was productive and we were able to bring forward... The meeting was productive, and we were able to bring forward the issues of council regarding employee dissatisfaction and the attachment felt by the tourist sector and other business owners. We most certainly achieved getting the message to casino management that they have to do more and how important it is for them to stay involved in our community. We certainly hope to see some change in their approach from this point forward. All in all, the meeting was very productive, and most importantly, we were able to discuss the apostle resolution for the two casino issue and the OLG's tax appeal. I would also like to mention some of the significant events in our city that took place in the past couple of weeks. You may have read about the annual Chin Ming Festival, Sunday, June 3rd, and I was honored to take part in the annual Chin Ming Festival at Pearview Cemetery. The festival is celebrated by the Chinese community of Niagara Falls, and residents paid tribute to their ancestors by preparing offerings and caring for the cemetery grounds. We had a visit from the Taiwanese government representatives last Sunday. Our city welcomed Dr. and Mrs. Lee of the Taiwanese government, representatives from Taiwan, including Taipei Economic Culture officials, visited Niagara Falls and then traveled to Ottawa. I was pleased to meet and welcome them to our city on behalf of the members of council. As well, many of you may know, last week was the Rural Ontario Medicine Week in Ontario, and I must commend the efforts of city staff and our doctor recruitment committee for hosting future doctors and putting forth a great effort to display Niagara Falls as an opportune place for them to practice. By all council, it was a successful weekend, and we look forward to further progress recruiting new doctors in our city. On June 5th, an historic home in our city was designated as an heritage site, the Orchard Catam House at 6023 Culp Street. It is a home with timeless classical elements that was built by John Orchard, then owned by family member Joseph Catam, both who played significant roles in the early townships of Niagara Falls, and the Orchard Catam House adds to the rich history of our city. I'd like to thank Counselor Wayne for her involvement in that dedication. This past Saturday as well, pilots, aircraft enthusiasts, and spectators gathered to watch the Russell Air Show 2007 on Sodom Road. I was very pleased to once again support this magnificent event in our community. I'd like to bring the attention of upcoming events as well to members of the community, that the Niagara Falls Walk for ALS takes place this Saturday, June 16th, at Chippewa Alliance Park. Registration begins at 9:00 AM, and with this, I conclude my remarks this evening. We'll move on to communications and comments of the city clerk. Item number one, members of councils request to proclaim July 1st Day as Ontario Federation of Anglers and Hunters Week. Moved by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Maves. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Item number two, request to proclaim June 11th to 16th as National Blood Donor Week, and request to raise the Canadian Blood Services fight above the city of Niagara Falls on June 14th for World Blood Donor Day. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Carrio. All those in favor? The motion's carried, thank you very much. Request for the BIA manifery to approve their officers and the 2007 budget for the manifery BIA. Moved by Counselor Wayne, seconded by Counselor Ianone. All those in favor? Motion's carried. And a request for approval for Niagara Parks fireworks, for consideration council. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Carrio. Any comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Are there any additional items for council consideration, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Your Worship, in your hand, there is a resolution that we need to pass, it's requesting the region issue debentures in accordance with the city's capital projects. There's a timing issue, so we had to rush that on. It's due to...
Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, or comments?
Yes, there's a report with respect to that. I looked at the project, I was still moving.
Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Ianone. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Under reports, we have from the clerk, actually, a seasonal business services license. Members of council, I hope you've had a chance to review it. Counselor Wayne, comments?
I'd just like to move it and commend staff for bringing this forward. I'm really glad we were able to come up with a resolution to the problem.
Yes, appreciate the seriousness in which this matter's been dealt with. Moved by Counselor Wayne, seconded by Counselor Maves, is that correct? Any comments? Any comments? No, having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you very much. Graduation of in-camera actions, Mr. Clerk?
Regarding the incorporation of City of Niagara Falls and the Transit Union Local 1582 Collective Agreement 2007 to 2008, the council ratified the amended collective agreement between the incorporation of City of Niagara Falls and the Amalgamated Transit Union and its Local 1582 from January 1st, 2007, to June 30th, 2008, by passing the bylaw appearing on tonight's agenda, and that council applied the same wage adjustments to the non-union transit salary schedule.
Okay. A mover and a second of that? Moved by Counselor Maves, seconded by Counselor Fisher. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion's carried, thank you. Okay, members of council, we have the consent agenda before us, so are there any items you wish to have deleted? Or, excuse me, Counselor Ianone?
Not removed, I just have a comment on municipal accounts. Much better to read. It gives far more description. I don't have to call and say what was this check for. I think they did a great job, and I much prefer this format.
Okay, any other comments? Counselor Wayne?
Just to note my opposition to MW 2007-51, dealing with the Croland Avenue and Grassleybrook Road closures.
Wayne and Ianone? Okay, fine. With consent by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves. We've heard the motion, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you very much. With regard to bylaws, Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws for the consideration of council?
Through the chair, a little bit of change. The one bylaw that we listed as a handle, the collective agreement with angle waste systems, we tried to pull that, we're just reviewing it in a little more detail in the future. So that spot, 2007-124, is now being taken by the bylaws to authorize the execution of the collective agreement with the Amalgamated Transit Union.
Okay. Okay, can I have a motion to give the bylaws, or here's the bylaws you gave in the first reading? Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves. Council's heard the motion, any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried.
Bylaws 2007-115 to 2007-126 were at a first time.
Okay, can I have a motion to give the bylaws a second, third reading? Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves. Once again, council's heard the motion, any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.
Bylaws 2007-115 to 2007-126 were the second and third time they passed.
Thank you. New business, Counselor Ianone?
Thank you, I have a couple of references. Council received an email today by Denise, I can't think her last name, in regards to a complaint to both the Humane Society, Munson. Munson.
Pardon?
Ms. Thompson. I think staff, afford this email, staff, if anybody in council already hasn't. You did? Yeah, we're receiving complaints endlessly now. I mean, we need some sort of resolution in regards to what we're doing with the contractor, are we going to keep retaining Niagara Falls Humane Society? They're not doing their job, according to the email that we received today. So is there some resolution coming to council anytime soon?
To that point, I discussed that with the CEO this afternoon, and Mr. McDonald, would you give us some comment, please, with respect to the response we're getting from our consultant?
Actually, if you don't mind, I'll ask, the clerk, he's dealing more directly with the timing and the dates of that project.
Mr. Yefina?
Through the chair, I think back, the April 30th meeting, I did prepare a report for council regarding the retention of Mr. Bandau, the consultant. That process is taking place, and in fact, is on schedule, as it was indicated in that report, and in fact, a number of staff are actually being interviewed by him tomorrow. He is interviewing other, he is interviewing some representatives of Humane Society as well, and we expect a report back from him shortly, so everything's going according to plan. I realize that there's a lot of desire to get this resolved, but we are moving forward, and it's progressing forward.
Mr. Ianone?
Mr. Wilson, interviewing counselors who've been dealing with Humane Society problems for years also, because perhaps our perspective might not be a bad input on that.
That, I'll speak to him tomorrow about that, and indicate that there is some interest by certain council members.
My next concern is, I got a call today by a woman on Doring Drive. She is representing a number of the neighbors, a number of the houses along Doring Drive. CN Rail last week went in and cut out all the trees between Doring Drive and the railway tracks, leaving no buffer for the residents and the noise between the train tracks and the houses. I did inform our CN Rail, it was very difficult for us to deal with, so I'd like staff to take a look at that, perhaps contact CN Rail, she wanted to know if they were going to come back and plant anything new. Those trees have been there forever, you've got eight to 10 houses along that land that those trees were the only buffer they had to the noise, and it's, they're sitting in an unacceptable situation right now, so if we could perhaps contact CN. Actually, I make a motion for staff to contact CN Rail and get back to council with that so that we can talk to them.
Moved by Counselor Ianone, seconded by Counselor Wayne. Any questions on the matter? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.
Also, Mr. Mayor, I know that on July 9th, we're dealing with the downtown revitalization report, and I didn't ask, I forgot to ask a question when the manifery were here. In regards to the grants and incentive programs for the downtown BIA, maybe Mr. McDonald can answer the question, have we had anybody come down and shown interest, very much like Patterson's did, in wanting to apply for the grants and loans? And are we moving them forward in this? Because I do know someone who has, and they haven't come to council, have been allowed to come to council to ask for that money, so why is that? And maybe we can include those people who have shown interest into the public media that we're having on the 9th?
Mr. McDonald?
There hasn't some interest, and Mr. Darberson, maybe he'll give us a number, I'm not sure the exact number of that.
Thank you, through, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a precise number, but there, the facade program was certainly of interest. The insurance company, Cross Street, for example, have come in and had discussions with us. There's been other interest shown under the various programs. I don't have the specific numbers to date, but we've held off in terms of processing the applications for the downtown, because we wanted these studies and so forth to be complete. Unlike the Dravenville area, everything was approved, there's no objections, and everything has been moving forward. And in fact, is the first application we received there. So there has been some, certainly some interest, there's been a bit of a waiting list for people to make the applications, but we are aware of, again, I don't know how the number, at least a half a dozen applications or interests are making applications downtown.
Counselor Ianone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we passed the CIP, we passed the CIP with the grants, loans, and incentive programs on there, and maybe it's my memory, but did council give direction to staff to hold off on the half a dozen people that have applied for the CIP improvements? Because I don't remember that.
Mr. Darberson?
Not really holding off, but you need to approve a budget allocation for the downtown CIP grants and also the Dravenville grants. Actually, the allocations were just, are recent, too, they're part of the budget considerations.
Counselor?
Thank you. Was there budget monies in this last budget for the manifery BIA?
I believe there was.
For the CIP program? But there was none for the downtown?
No, there was as well.
Then, you know something, I don't, I don't understand why we're telling people to hold off to all the plans and consultants' reports are back in. That doesn't affect our CIP. And I've had people who've come down, they have no problem with the way staff's dealing with them, they have a problem that they're being told to hold off. I thought our CIP was the governing document in order for those grants and improvement plans, so if, I mean, are you telling me they have to wait till after we do what? Just receive the consultant's report? I don't know what you're expecting from us on the 9th, but for those interested, I would encourage them, now that we've passed one for manifery, that they come back down. This council has not directed staff to hold off or send them back. Come down and make your application, and have it come before council, too, because we all supported that CIP, and we've said repetitively that that, I just, I don't want them to think they're being treated different than the manifery BIA, and I know that they've been down, I did know there were half a dozen, but come on down now and apply for the grants, loans, and incentives. You know, and I just, I didn't just retire, but I really think that we should be encouraging them to come now, not holding them off.
Mr. Darberson, once again?
No, the most, the interest, my understanding, is on the facades, and unlike the Dravenville, we need to establish facade improvement guidelines, and we've commissioned a study, and that, when I said hold off, we didn't have, we do not have the end result of that study for the downtown area to actually issue grants for facade improvements, because the actual theme, the historic theme, hasn't been finalized in terms of the urban design guidelines. The council approved the Dravenville plan, it did so without urban design guidelines. The consultant provided generalized guidelines, but in the downtown, very specific guidelines are being prepared, and that was one of the council's directions, to prepare those very specific guidelines. And then when I said hold off, it's largely because of the facade improvement program and those guidelines.
Mr. Ianone?
When are those guidelines going to be available?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we had our last meeting with consultants, probably in the order of three more weeks, those guidelines will be done.
So run around the time of the July 9th, where we're discussing this, that's great.
Okay, thank you. I have Counselor Thompson, Counselor Peter Angelo. Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, excuse me, Counselor Thompson, was it a comment you want to make before I do that?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, if you just hold it.
Thank you. Just, I just wanted to follow up on that and clear up the big myth that's been circulating in the community, and the myth is that we removed all monies for Queen Street from the budget. That's not true. As it just came out, the monies for the CIP are still in there. The money, the studies that were ongoing are still being conducted, and, you know, there's this big myth out there that all money for Queen Street is gone. It's not true, as everybody just heard, CIP monies are definitely still there, that's something we overall supported in the past, we continue to support now. I just need to get that out.
Okay. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, thank you. Several months ago, I brought to the attention, an ask for a resolution, council, with respect to macular degeneration. When you make these resolutions, and the cost of treatment, which is, I think, southern provinces fund that, you all have, and yet, it's not done here in Ontario, and people are going blind as a result of not having the financial resources. The resolution was passed, was sent on to the local Member of Parliament, Provincial Parliament, and also the Premier and others. I got a email a short while ago, asking me, had we heard anything? I had not heard anything, but I'm wondering on these resolutions, do you, Mr. Clerk, through you, through the chair, do you get anything back from Mr. Crater or anybody on this, particularly the minister that we sent to?
We usually get responses from the ministers, and they are distributed through the council information that we email you when we do get those responses. I mean, I don't want to cast dispersions on the province, but sometimes those responses are fairly slow. I haven't seen one related to the, to the resolution you're referring to.
Anyway, I have another very tragic email from a lady who was in touch with me among others before, who is getting to the point where it's costing her a substantial amount of money. She's unable to continue working, and this is really a tragic situation, so I would like to pass this over to you, and maybe you could send it on to the Member of Parliament and ask him if he has heard anything, or if we can get some kind of comment back. The other thing, following up on my comments earlier, and the discussion we had with respect to the property on Lundy's Lane, if there is an opportunity under the Municipal Act now to look after the, and to regulate the appearance and design features of buildings. We've never had the opportunity to do that in the past through the peer review, I know we've done it with our 30-story tourism structures, but this looks like it's new information, and maybe we could just have a report back from staff indicating that that is a possibility in the future or not.
I'd like to make that a motion, please. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Carrio. Your staff investigate the matter. Any discussion further? Having seen none? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Counselor Thompson, with respect to the macular degeneration issue, I did have a chance to talk to our HMPP about this about a month and a half ago, and as the clerk said many times, responses we get are somewhat delayed after the fact, usually several months, and in fact, so if we do get anything, we'll certainly pass it on to the members of council. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship. I have one more report that I wanted to ask for from the Planning Department tonight, and I understand that the way that the city goes through the planning process, we implement the planning act that's in Ontario right now, but I also believe that in some ways there's a void in the process, because there's two parts to a rezoning application. First, council will pass the rezoning, and then after that, Your Worship, we deal with the site plan approval. Once the actual rezoning is passed, then we have to wait for the bylaw to come back. Once the bylaw is approved, then any adjacent property owners, or anyone for that matter, has 21 days from the day that the bylaw is passed in order to appeal the application. Your Worship, I think oftentimes, the 21 days runs out before the actual site plan is approved. Then, if they have issues that deal with the site plan, once they get into the site Then, if they have issues that deal with the site plan, once they get into the site plan stage, if they're not happy with the site plan, then there's no cause for recourse, because site plans are non-appealable. So I think what I see there happening is that there really is no safeguard for adjacent property owners. The report that I'd like back, Your Worship, is one on whether or not we're able to change the requirements that we have in-house. I'd also like to know what other municipalities are doing on the issue. But I think the question that I would have for planning is whether or not we can have our site plan approval before we actually pass the bylaw for the rezoning. I think if we did it that way, then what we would be doing is we'd be giving adjacent property owners, who only have issues that deal with site plan, a safeguard, knowing that if they're not happy with the site plan approval, or what council approves as the site plan, then they do have a recourse. I think the way that we're doing it right now, we're kind of doing it backwards, in the sense that we're approving the rezoning, and then the time to appeal the rezoning runs out, and then we're approving the site plan. And I think that they actually lose their ability to appeal the application on the site plan issues. So I'd like to make that a motion, Your Worship.
We have a motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Mays. Before we take the vote, perhaps you can have Mr. Darbison address that. Have you thought about that, Mr. Darbison, your deliberations?
Well, it's a matter to discuss all kinds of times. Site plan is a very difficult process to resolve. The planning act prescribes timeframe, amount of time provided, so forth, and typically, the way to appeal is zoning bylaw, and the reason why we'll appeal the site plan. How does the standard is to rule the game and to follow. I don't know whether or not I can answer your question about whether it requires site plan approval prior to rezoning. I just don't have that much.
Counsel Peter Angelo?
Yeah, Your Worship, I was thinking that perhaps we could, if there was no actual timeframe, and when we have to pass the bylaw for the rezoning, then perhaps we can have an in-house requirement that we deal with the site plan before council actually deals with the rezoning bylaws.
Just wondering whether that, thinking aloud, would that hold up the application further?
Well, I mean, and for the application to go forward, both the rezoning and the site plan have to be approved anyway.
Right.
So I don't think that it would hold up the application if we approved the site plan before the actual bylaw.
Okay. Mr. McDonald?
We, with Your Worship, we'd be happy to do a report and look at the pros and cons, because we talked about similar conditions before, and typically, as you know, the developer's in a big rush. And in fact, we've contradicted our own procedures in the past in order to give early approval on development applications. This would definitely slow it down for developers' concern, but I appreciate the points you're making. We've had recent discussions with developers, and the other problem is, did they really want to spend all the money and the time required relative to meetings and investment to do a site plan, when they don't even know if they have zone approvals? So it's, it's the pros and cons on both. So we'd be happy to do a report and bring it to council for discussion.
We do have motion on the floor, members of council.